...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Remy. And if anyone, well, everybody's standing, if I can get everybody to take about thirty seconds, if we could have a moment of silence for the terrible tragedy we had in Orlando the last couple of days and wish our best to the families and everybody involved in that. So if we could take about thirty seconds of silence, please. You can be seated. Okay, this is the time when we like to open up to the public. Anybody that came and spoke to us tonight that'd like to speak to us about everything, there are some things we cannot talk on and I'll go over those right away. And if we, if there's a topic that's already on our agenda and you want to provide testimony, we ask you to wait until that agenda item. If the city is currently in a matter of litigation on any matter, matter or any issue, the council will not be able to accept any testimony or any comments on that. If it's a quasi judicial land use matter or a matter that the city councillor staff knows that we're going to be hearing in the near future as far as a public hearing on a land use matter, we will not be taking any testimony on that. So, those being said, what I'd like to do is ask anybody, is there anybody who would like to speak to the council on anything tonight? Okay, we ask you to come on up and state your name and your address for the record and for the councillor's information and also sign in, please.
Okay. Hi, my name is Jason Litt. Address is 1015 Northeast 10th Avenue, McMinnville. And I'm here on behalf of the Iri Vineyards, which is a business that's operated in that neighborhood for almost fifty years now and one of the largest businesses along Alpine Avenue where the Improvement District is being proposed. I really want to thank city staff and the folks from HDR and from Sarah Architects who have really done an excellent job of communicating to us what the improvements are. And because of that, I feel like we've kind of entered a period of time where we can start to have a discussion about how those improvements can be refined to better suit the neighborhood. There's a model in the, in the offices down at the CDC, beautiful wooden model of the improvements as proposed and the slogan on the model is "A Street Without Boundaries." But it is a street with boundaries. They're talking about putting a lot of very permanent hardscape features down the street which are going to have implications for traffic flow, for truck flow, which is, as you know, crucial for a commercial zone and a mixed-use zone. It's going to be expensive to install, it's going to be expensive to maintain, and it's going to be expensive to patrol. So, I just wanted to approach you all and thank you first of all for your efforts and your listening in on this whole conversation, but also to let you know that, you know, I'm going to be working with Rose to bring you some more specific details as business owners in the area learn more about what's going to happen and kind of present our point of view. So, I wanted to thank you very much.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Jason, Kelly, Kevin? You have any?
How about down at this end?
Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the council on anything? Come in again, state your name and your address for the record and please, after he gets done signing, after Jason gets done, you can sign, sign in.
Jack Reed. Address is 1610 Southeast Queenborough Court. I'm speaking on behalf of my neighbors here that are sitting here in the audience. We have a problem. It's a drug house on Queenborough Court and also Debbie. And the thing that's really bothering us is that about a month or so ago, the place was raided, they took four, five, six people to jail, they're back out on the street that afternoon, you know? It's a revolving door. Nothing seems to be done about it. The person that occupies the house, the place has been in foreclosure for over two years and the damn bank don't do nothing about it. The person has no electricity, they've taken away her garbage service, the place is in nuisance, it runs our property value down. The place is a dive to begin with, I mean, if you go by and take a look at it, it's disgusting. We all have nice yards, we have nice homes, we take care of our stuff, and these people that live there could care less. And I would like to know why the city don't do more about it. We are taxpayers, we pay for our taxes, and nothing's being done. It's sad.
Okay, let me ask quick, Matt, I think you're aware of that situation. I'll get our police chief to weigh in first if he's aware of the situation and what's happening.
Yes, we're aware. Couple, two or three, four weeks ago, he stated we, there was multiple people were arrested from the residence. We have tried to get ahold of the bank, they referenced it, it is in foreclosure and they're squatting, I would say. And the bank has done little about that to get them out of there, so that's where we are at currently.
Okay, a couple other questions. And Doug, I think this may go to, do you, city, any type of, or it could be one for David, any kind of, since there is no electricity and they're basically, as the chief said, squat, is there any kind of nuisance ordinance in place that would, that could expedite? David?
You know, I personally am not familiar with this property, but I will get with Matt about this after the council meeting and I will reach out to you guys if you have contact information on there.
Pardon me?
If you, if your contact information is on there, I'll follow up with you personally this week after I've had a chance to look into it.
You want the name of the bank here?
No, I want your, your contact information.
Oh, my contact information, okay, fine.
And then, David, let me ask you this question, being that as a city, is there, I would take it there's more we could probably do in regards from an average citizen's standpoint, but as a city regarding with the bank? I mean...
There are strategies in general terms that, that I know city, you know, this isn't a unique issue to McMinnville with these kind of zombie properties that are in foreclosure and the banks aren't paying attention to them. It's just, it's not something that, since I've, short time I've been here in McMinnville, I haven't had to dig into that type of an issue yet, so I'm not sure what we have on the books or whether there may need to be more put into ordinance for us to take additional actions, but, you know, I'll dive into that this week and get in touch.
Okay, he'll get in touch, our city attorney will get in touch, Mr. Reed?
Okay.
And then what we'll do is we'll go ahead and ask David at the next council meeting to update the council on what he's found out and what action.
Okay, thank you very much.
You betcha.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Kevin.
So, in situations like this, if I was a property owner and I was allowing those things to happen, the city could come after me, correct? As a property owner? They could cite me for violation of codes and things like that?
David?
Do we have that right to go against, I'm sure, I know the answer is yes. Would we have that right to go against the banks for causing a nuisance?
If we have a right to go after the owner of the property for nuisance property and the bank is the owner of the property, then yes. You know, a lot of these situations, the bank may not have taken actual title yet, they may be going slow through the foreclosure process. I just, I need to look into it in order to be able to answer the question.
So, we'll make sure he gets back to, come on, yeah, you can say something again, we'll have to have you state your name and your record and sign in, please.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Stapish and I live on Angela Court.
Can I get you to pull one of the microphones a bit closer to Elizabeth so everybody can hear you?
Pull it up closer to your mouth.
Yeah, pull, just pull, pull it up closer. There you go.
My name is Elizabeth Stapish and I live on Angela Court, 919 Southeast Angela Court. My cul-de-sac actually is at the entrance of Thompson Park, which is just around the corner from the house that Jack was referencing. And in the last, well, we just started a neighborhood watch and that night, we met last night, we had probably close to twenty people in the neighborhood there. Everybody is now going to be keeping license plates and we're trying to get a surveillance system put in to help the police actually track down and get all of the people that are there. The problem, which one of the things that Jack didn't mention, is that these people have taken this farther than just being a nuisance in that house. There, they are, there's both heroin and meth being used in the house. Both her, she's been there for ten years, she's not new to the neighborhood, everybody knows her. Both of her children are in and out of jail, one's currently there getting out on the ninth. They are, because there's no electricity, they're traveling around the neighborhood to the park and charging their cell phones at the park, which they're also using heroin at the park and ditching their needles at the entrance to the park and in everybody's yards along the way because the police is now narrowing in on them. So, we are now at the point, where do I start? There's so much that's gone in, in the last, you know, couple of weeks since they've really been trying to crack down on them, which I think the police are doing absolutely everything that they can. I have no doubt that they're not trying.
Sorry.
There's been a couple of cars that have been pulled over leaving from drug buys that actually, one of them ended up in front of my house while my children were outside, so I'm having to shuffle my kids, get in the house, because the last time that they went after somebody for parole violation, there was a runner and they blocked off the neighborhood. And, you know, we've been there for about two years and hadn't had any issues up until the last six months, and now it's become where I don't want my kids out front. And I'm having to argue with my kids that they can't play out front because, you know, they can't skate, they can't ride their bikes, because I don't know who's coming down my cul-de-sac. You know, I can't do the dishes and let the kids play, I mean, it's affecting our family. The other issue is I don't think just running these people out of the neighborhood is going to be a solution. You know, the more I dig into this, because I did contact Wells Fargo Home Mortgage who's holding this, the status is all they would really say, is that it hasn't gone to auction and they're stalling. And so, I don't think we're going to get anywhere as far as just getting them out of the house, but because there's connections, not only with that house, there's two houses on, over on Debbie Court, and then there's also one, I believe, on Cleveland, which is the next street over. So, we've got, like, all angles are, are coming into the park. My main issue is I don't think that getting these people out of our neighborhood is a solution. I think the problem's much bigger. We have, most of these people, they get busted, they go to jail, they say I want Drug Court, they go to Drug Court and they're out within three days, so they haven't even fully detoxed from the drugs. Then they're in an outpatient program, I believe, where they're manipulating the system and they're not actually, I mean, they're going through the system and they're still using. So, whatever we're doing to actually address the drug problem in McMinnville is not working. So, what I want to know is what money do we have to expand the programs for the people and actually get them help rather than just kicking them out? I think it's gotten a lot worse since the transit stations came in, the bus station, because now we're seeing people coming in, I mean, it's, we've got a lot of homeless people we don't know what to do with. The co-op is actually paying the utility bill for the house on Queenborough, so our resources are not being used to help the people who actually need it, they're being helped to, they're just helping the people who are using. So, what can we do to help these people and start using, I mean, I saw the bill that's up with the marijuana, not supposed to be going for public safety, so maybe that money can be spent on expanding our mental illness for McMinnville and maybe even for putting in an actual in-house drug rehabilitation program rather than just this...
Yeah, and I know the council and the staff, we take those kind of things very serious because we don't believe anybody should have to live in that kind of environment. I think the only thing I could tell you right now is that, I think you brought up a couple additional issues with a couple of other houses that...
They're all connected.
What I'd like to do is have our city attorney, as I say, after he gets ahold of Mr. Reed, talk to Matt and see what other strategies we might be able to put in place to address not only that, your particular issue, but other like-type issues. Because I know the city belonging to some organizations, I know even the police chief can't tell the council about, some of the activity, the legal enforcement activity that's going on with Wyson and all of that sort of stuff. So, I'm sure there's a lot more going on than even us as a council know, and right now us as a council should probably know. So, I think if we have the city attorney and the police chief, just get together and huddle.
The other thing, one more thing, in talking with the officers, and we, we had two officers that actually came out to our meeting, which was, we were all very excited, they were willing to come out and talk with everybody, but apparently we only have four officers on, we're lucky if we have five on at any given time, and we haven't actually expanded our police force in ten years, is that true? Like, added additional officers, even with the growth of McMinnville?
I think we've added some downwind, but we're not that much, and I'll leave that up to the chief to answer that question.
I think we've added maybe one in eight, ten years.
Okay.
We've got here as far as, as far as numbers work.
Okay. I mean, is that something that anybody's talking about? Is it an issue for anybody other than me?
Yeah, scary.
Oh, no, I think it's an issue, it's an issue all over town, and it's not just a livability issue, I mean, let's face it, it's a financial issue too, and we're always looking at different ways to finance those, because I think the council here, as councillor Manke indicated, we realize there's an issue too.
Well, if we don't do something about it soon, it's going to be out of control and we're not going to be able to fix it. It's, it's scary.
Well, we're going to be addressing some of those issues tonight, so, I mean, we'll at least be discussing them, so why don't you stick around?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Kelly. Anybody, anybody else that would like to speak to the council on anything that isn't on our agenda that has anything different than what we've heard so far?
Yes.
Okay. Give her a second to sign in and then we'll, you can get, you can get ready. Nice to see you back. Come on in and state your name and everything for the record, your address.
My name is Jared Miller. I live at 947 Southeast Ford. I've lived there for about two years. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I sympathize. I'm sorry that things have gone down, it's been a pretty rough weekend, I'm sure for all of us with Orlando as well as, I just wanted to say that there was another suicide, it's alleged, as Tim Atwood was found dead this weekend. He's been a lifelong recovery. He was the one who, he ran the Serenity House here off West Second. He was well-connected with the community. I really didn't see a downside to him, so that kind of came as a shock. I didn't really know the man, but some of you may have met him at least. He's been, he's been working through a lot of the recovery for a really long time, and I didn't get a chance to actually work with him at all, but since he's been working to build these homes, he had a lot of input that I unfortunately didn't hear him in any of the councils that I had heard previously, that he had managed that home for some time. He had managed to bring recovery from thirty-day factoring all the way through to years that people have lived there. There have been two people that have lived there, and they took over the management of that position. So, they had actually had a recovery system built there without Tim and he had moved back out with his wife. So, really, that's all I have today. I kind of have a lot to say, but I'm going to go ahead and just introduce myself, since I've spoken with Rick before. The homelessness is an issue and there are words to be said about it, and I'm sure all of us have an opinion. So, I hope to see you again, I'm sure, and it's nice to meet all of you.
Thank you, Jared.
Thank you, Rick.
Okay, anybody else like to speak to the council on anything that isn't on our agenda tonight? One more chance? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and move forward. Thank you, everybody. We always look forward to those conversations. Council, that'll take us to our consent agenda, and our consent agenda, you will see the minutes of the March 8, 2016 dinner and regular meetings. We have a resolution number 2016-30, and that was the resolution regarding the award of the contract for construction of the 2016 Sturry Seal Project. Resolution 2016-31, and that resolution approving the lease with Connect Aviation Oregon LLC to ride FBO or fixed base operator and airport maintenance service at the McMinnville Airport. So, council, is there anything anybody would like pulled off the consent agenda for discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by councillor Hill, second by councillor Manke. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None hearing, none. Let it show that the consent agenda passed unanimously, those members present with councillor Yoder and councillor Rudin absent. Okay, that will take us to our public hearing tonight, and we have three different public hearing tonight, and the first public hearing is regarding the renewal of the Downtown Economic Improvement District or the Downtown EID. And as we get talking about that, as we get talking about that one, what I'll do is, I'm going to open the public hearing, hearing, and this time what I'd like to do is turn it over to David. So, David, you have a staff report on that one?
Sure. Okay. There's a staff report included in the packet that was put together by Doug Montgomery, planning director. This is a, the hearing tonight is on the proposed extension of the Downtown Economic Improvement District from August 1, 2016 through July 31, 2019. The Downtown Economic Improvement District was originally formed by ordinance in 1986, has been extended several times by the council with some changes to the boundaries of the Downtown Economic Improvement District over that time and periodic increases in the rate. The proposed extension this year and the request that came from the McMinnville Downtown Association for the renewal of the Downtown Economic Improvement District did not propose any changes to the boundary of the district nor any increase to the fee that has been in place since 2013, so it's a continuation of the fee. There are two zones in the district. Zone one is, has an assessment of seven and a half cents, and the zone two has a, an assessment of .375 cents. We sent notices out to all of the property owners located within the district and informed them that there was an opportunity to be heard at the public hearing tonight. And with that, I would just kick back to the council for hearing.
Counselors, as you're, as you're well aware too, as we, as we go to public testimony, that there were some letters in front of you tonight that were also submitted, type besides what was in your packet. So, that being said, what I'd like to do, since this is a legislative public hearing, I will open up testimony from anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the EID. We'd like to hear from anybody that, that would like to speak. We do ask for the interest of time if you speak about anything or somebody in front of you speaks about the same thing to limit your comments. So, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak about the EID? Well, you, you're going last, Rebecca, you can come, Rebecca, are you going to speak? You're human? Well, there's three chairs up here, why don't all three of you come in and again, sign in and state your name, and since this is about the EID, if you do own or operate a business in the EID, can you say what business that is? If you're not, just state your address.
Thank you very much, mayor and councillors. We really are excited about being up here to be able to present to you. We do have a three-part presentation, we'll try to be as succinct as possible. But first, I guess my name is Scott Cunningham. I am the current president of the Downtown Association. I also own Community Plate and live at 115 Southeast Mountain View Lane here in McMinnville. Want to start off with just a couple thank yous. Thank you to Doug Montgomery, who has led the planning department here and we have worked closely with over many, many years and do not look forward to his retirement, even though I'm sure he does. So, and also, congrats to you, Mayor Olson, in your win recently, and we look forward to presenting to you in a year, and hopefully we'll be able to get back the money we were given to, by the county before.
Asking for more.
Yeah. And unfortunately Martha isn't here, it's been a truly pleasure working with her and kind of developing the new tactics that we want for the Downtown Association and the partnership, for sure, and it's definitely been a good start to that, to that partnership. I'm going to give just a little brief history of what the MDA has done in the past and what we are here to do. So, the McMinnville Downtown Association was incorporated in 1986 to promote the economic health and development of the downtown McMinnville. That same year, the McMinnville City Council approved an Economic Improvement District, which financed by a square footage assessment on downtown properties inside the EID boundary. The city has contracted with the MDA since in its inception to administer the EID. In fact, this does mark our thirty years of a partnership with the city. The MDA is one of only three Oregon communities receiving the 2013 accreditation by the National Main Street Program and is one of six performing Main Streets organizations in the Oregon Main Street Network. Performing organizations must be a mature association that are required to go through rigorous activity and reporting requirements. Our EID has become a model for many other Oregon communities. For the coming three-year period, we are requesting the EID assessment to stay at the current rate of 7.5 cents for zone one and 3.75 cents for zone two. This assessment makes up nearly one quarter of our annual budget. The MDA board would like to request one change to the job title of our manager. In the last thirty years, the role of the manager has evolved, and to keep the MDA on par with our fellow organizations, we feel the manager's title should be that of Executive Director. Specifically, Visit McMinnville has an Executive Director while the Chamber of Commerce has a President/CEO. The MDA supports activities such as concerts on the plaza, which coincidentally start this Thursday, so you're more welcome to come down, I think the band starts at about seven o'clock. The McMinnville Farmer's Market, the UFO Festival Landing Party and Parade, Turkey Rama, Halloween Safe and Sane Open House, as well as many others. This income also funds promotional staff and administrative costs. Since the MDA's inception, and in part due to the association's efforts, the vacancy rates downtown have decreased from a high of eighteen percent in 1986 to the current level of approximately two percent, while the national average sits at seventeen percent. We recently have seen serious investment in the downtown, and in fact, since July 1 of 2013, we have seen an investment of more than $6.9 million. Bob Emmerich and his business partner Dustin Wyatt made a huge commitment to the future of McMinnville by replacing the old McMinnville Glass Building with a KAOs development. We've also seen three of our most prominent buildings change hands as well, including the building that Community Plate is in. New owner Dudley Slater was very impressed to hear all the incredible things that our community was doing to secure a vibrant downtown. It was with this sense of commitment from our downtown partners that he chose to commit as well, assuring all of our tenants that he was fully intended to work with us to keep the Campbell and Thrifty Building a true cornerstone on Third Street. Families and businesses want to relocate in McMinnville for a myriad of reasons, including strong schools, quality higher education, strong business and family support networks. We often hear that McMinnville's authenticity and the charming downtown was what sold people in our community. In fact, we got to show off a few years ago when Oregon's annual Main Street Conference was set here. The MDA worked with many of the business owners and property owners to help clean and replace awnings as well as repaint the trashcans and clean facades and sidewalks. With the addition of Visit McMinnville, we have truly filled out the ranks as a community. By Visit McMinnville leading the marketing charge, this allows the MDA to focus on our goal of supporting the local businesses and property owners. It also gives us an opportunity to be ambassadors for not just the downtown, but the city as a whole. We have enjoyed a strong relationship with the chamber and MEDP. Nathan Nottingham and the rest of the chamber has partnered with us in addressing some of the city's most difficult issues, while Rebecca Quant has worked closely with Jody Christensen to court new businesses to our community. The city's support of the McMinnville Downtown Association means that we can continue to care for Oregon's favorite Main Street in the same way we have for the past thirty years. I do have one last thank you, and that is to our hard-working volunteers. Even with the support of our property owners, our members, the numerous sponsors, and of course, you, the city, we would not be able to do this without them. Since the last time that we sat before you, the volunteers have donated over 5,080 hours that roughly equates to a value of just over... course, you, the city, we would not be able to do this without them. Since the last time that we sat before you, the volunteers have donated over 5,080 hours. That roughly equates to a value of just over $117,000 in donated time. And I thank you to Rebecca, Sean, Leslie, and Renee for all the work that they do. Again, this has been a great partnership, and we can only hope that this continues for the next 30 years. Here's going to be Karen Mosher with some highlights of our successes.
Good evening. My name's Karen Mosher. I'm an attorney with Hagerberg, Ruder, Gowell, Fredrickson-Higgins. Here in downtown McMinnville, we are a business located within the Economic Improvement District. I'm currently serving as the Secretary of the MDA, as well as the co-chair of the MDA's Economic Improvement Committee. Mr. Cunningham has provided you with a background with regard to the MDA and its history. I'd like to share some of the achievements and recognition that downtown McMinnville has received since the last renewal of the Economic Improvement District in 2013. I'll do my best to be brief and just cover the highlights, even though there's a lot more that could be covered. Over the past three years, the MDA has been busy working to achieve its mission, which is to promote and enhance our historic downtown as the economic, social, and cultural heart of the community. In 2014, the MDA offered facade improvement grants to its members to assist with the cost of renovations. We hosted the Oregon Main Street Convention in the fall of 2014, which brought hundreds of people to our city. The MDA took on significant downtown cleanup efforts in order to prepare for the convention. We also partnered with the city in 2014 to develop the Park Ranger Program, and assisted with funding for the Park Ranger, who was assigned to the downtown core in order to address safety concerns. The farmer's market has grown considerably over the past three years. It's the best farmer's market in the area. I consistently receive positive feedback about the market, and here are people traveling from out of town just to visit the market. As Mr. Cunningham mentioned, the Concerts on the Plaza, formerly known as the Brown Bag Concert, concerts have also grown considerably over the last three years. This year, we're pleased to offer, in addition to the live music, a family-friendly environment with local food vendors and a beer garden. As you are probably already aware, our downtown has recently received national accolades. In 2014, McMinnville was named a finalist for the Best Main Street in America by Parade Magazine. In 2015, the American Planning Association named Third Street one of the five great streets in America. And Third Street's one of the smallest streets to ever win that award. In addition, McMinnville has received recognition in several other national publications, including Sunset Magazine, Conde Nast, Bon Appetit, and the list goes on. The continued recognition given to downtown McMinnville highlights the hard work that goes into building such a place and maintaining such a place. Countless hours and significant effort over many generations was spent in order to make downtown McMinnville what it is today, and countless hours and significant effort will continue to maintain and further the achievements in the future. Thank you for your consideration of renewing the Economic Improvement District to allow the MDA to continue its mission. And I'll pass this along to Rebecca Quant, our manager.
Okay, good evening. My name is Rebecca Quant, and I am the manager of the McMinnville Downtown Association. So Karen and Scotty gave you a little brief overview, and now I'm going to just briefly chat with you about the Downtown Association's approach to the EID renewal this year and some of our future goals. So the mission, one of the main missions of the MDA is historic preservation, and we've recently completed ACLG grant to update the historic district and create educational pieces, such as a walking map and historic MAC website. I give it a packet out, I'm not for sure if Rosa dropped off those stroll booklets, but they might be in front of you right now. That's one of the deliverables, exactly. We're really proud of this. We've sold out. We had 1,500 copies and we sold out already, which is really exciting. We're now moving on to version 2, which will include new properties and new stories, because we want to continue to work hard to make our historic downtown a social, cultural, and economic benefit to McMinnville. I also sit on the Historic Landmarks Committee, along with the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee for the city of McMinnville, and I'm proud of those partnerships that we've made with one another. We also plan to continue our Park Ranger Patrol Program. This partnership makes our downtown safe, clean, and inviting. The MDA will work hard to keep our vacancy rate of first-floor properties below 2% and then in hopes to activate many of the second-floor properties, along with helping property owners reinvest in their existing structures downtown. The MDA plays a major role in informing property owners about facade improvement grants, along with other grants and funding sources that are available to them. Our goal is also to create a stronger link between Third Street and the Granary District. Linking these two sections of the downtown is very important to the MDA's mission. And then lastly, I just really want to reiterate that we are a huge asset to the city. We provide services that would otherwise be more expensive if the city were to bid those out. We work together to make our downtown a strong, vibrant, healthy community, and the MDA hopes to continue these partnerships and collaborate on additional projects in the future. Two words that come to mind, transparency and communication. We strive to be very communicative and transparent with community members, property, and business owners, as much as possible. We made sure that this time around with the EID renewal, that each individual property owner inside of the Economic Improvement District received information in a packet from the MDA regarding the EID renewal. We sent out this packet of information, along with a mini-flyer, I believe you have that with you as well. And we kindly asked any property owners that wanted to go above and beyond to sign a letter or to send in a statement in favor of the EID renewal. You have in front of you, I believe, you fancy new laptops, but some of those copies of those letters, there's a packet, and then I'll circle back around to Karen now so she can read one of those.
Walter Gowell from my office was unable to be here tonight, but he did ask me to read a letter on his behalf. Dear Mayor Members of the Council, dear Mayor and Members of the Council, excuse me. I'm away on vacation today in Scotland, but I wanted to take a few moments to express my individual support for the renewal of the EID Assessment District. I do this, one, as a co-owner of three properties located within the district, two, a business owner within the district, and three, a volunteer active for some years in the McMinnville Downtown Movement. This past year has seen several awards for downtown McMinnville, recognizing the achievements of the private-public partnership pioneered by the MDA with the strong support of the city council. I believe the support of the council reflects the strong support and priority accorded the health of downtown McMinnville by the entire community. The leadership role of the MDA has been pivotal to that health and vibrancy. For many years, I've had the opportunity to participate in the process of creating a master plan for the continuing revitalization of our downtown. Several excellent plans have been prepared, presented, and endorsed by the council, but have largely gone unfulfilled due to a lack of funding. At long last, a long-term funding strategy has been put into place, and public investment has begun to implement adopted downtown plans. It is an exciting time. The importance of the MDA's current role as an organizing and management process for a healthy downtown cannot be overstated. Some may argue that the MDA's role has been fulfilled and the current funding source should be terminated. I do not share that view. I believe that the hard work of downtown planning, management, and revitalization is intensifying, and that the MDA's involvement in Wise Council is needed more than ever. Continuing downtown development in McMinnville without the MDA would be tantamount to depriving the downtown revitalization movement of its CEO and Board of Directors at a vital stage in the process. As a property and district owner located in the downtown core, I strongly endorse the proposed renewal of the MDA Assessment District and appreciate the city council's favorable consideration of that renewal. Respectively submitted, Walter R. Gowell. And I'll just mention, too, that Walt Gowell was on the founding board of directors for the MDA back in 1986, and apparent by his letter, he's a strong supporter.
Thank you. Anything, closing, Rebecca, you have anything you want to add? How about Scott? Anything you want to?
No, we're, we're just excited for the next 30 years.
Next 30 years. Well, I'd like to thank all of you for coming in front of us, and I'll turn it over to the council now, and see if Kelly's got any questions or comments. Kelly?
Not really, although I appreciate the nice presentation.
Kevin?
Nope, thanks.
Start with you, Remy?
No, thank you very much.
About Scott?
You know, I, I think back and, and, you know, I remember Walt, and I remember Jeb and Doug, and, and when I came to town in 1992, I was on the board, and I've just seen tremendous successes out there. Last time we were looking at the renewal, I don't know that the communication was where it needed to be, and so I, I just, I, I just recognized Cassie and Rebecca and the board for the communication, but more so the listening and the successes you've had. And you've, you've shared a lot of that. And as I'm out and about, I still hear, this is a community, this is the downtown to, to pattern success after in the state of Oregon. And what we're doing tonight is a part of that. You know, it, we could not have gotten without the support of the property owners, but it is the, from my perspective, it is the stewardship that you take with those monies and using it that makes it happen. So, again, I, I salute you. It's a lot different dialogue this time around than it was last time that we were meeting, and it, that's a lot of hard work, so thank you.
Believe it or not, I preclude Scott a little bit. I'll go back to 1986 during the founding, being on both, at that, those years, being on both the Budget Committee and on the Planning Commission. How at that time, the council, some of the councils struggled with, do we form an Economic Improvement District? What do we do with the MDA? Will the money be really spent right? Will it help attract businesses downtown McMinnville? Will it help make McMinnville what we wanted to be? And that was really the living room of the city, and I think we're sitting here 30 years later, and everything that we talked about 30 years ago has been done and more. So I just, I, there's been so many people over the last three years that have been involved with this whole thing. It's just, I don't know if I can even start to name them all, but it's because of the citizens, the businesses who are dedicated where we are. And I just want to thank all of you and everybody on the board, and all the businesses and volunteers, because it's not the council that makes it happen. It's everybody out there, the businesses and the volunteers and citizens that make it happen, and not the council that makes it happen. So, thank you very much, you three. That being said, what I'll do is I'll officially close.
There may be other folks that want to testify.
Ah, there could be.
There could be.
Would anybody else like to testify? Doug, I'm sorry, you can't. Mark, do you have anything to say? No? Is there anybody else who would like to testify?
Oh, sure, come on up, Jared.
Yeah, there's a picture of it when it originally originated. I was just going to say, I walk down to the farmer's market quite a bit and enjoy it very much. The, the traffic across it between the light is the only issue that we have that causes a lot of congestion. I think it's the three-block radius from Second until it hits First. So that, those, those three blocks there to the, to the apartment. So besides that, I'm engineering for something with the, with the roads to fix something, like putting crosswalks there that designate more of an abundance of crossing, that maybe a little further down, like on the block on the right instead of the left, so people can cross more fluently in groups, rather than just people hitting that whole block to cross when the light is green.
Well, hopefully, I'll just bring back to one of the projects we're working on, the Second Street project with the turn at Adams and, or Baker and Second, and some of the other things that we're moving now in a direction that alleviates some of those kind of issues, except we, although we have the promises of the engineer that it will. Correct, Mr. Bissett? But I think we're working on those, and we're well aware of those things, Jared, and I agree with the experience.
One last follow-up question. These, these documents for movements that are pre-written, do we have a printout online prior to the meeting of these that we're reading up on screen?
The ones that are part of the packet are online, on the website. The whole packet is, not just Agenda, the whole packet is. But if you, if there's anything that's given out to the council at night, if you get ahold of Rose, she would gladly give you what's given out tonight that isn't on it. Rose, that's a good question. Things that are submitted, like tonight, the letters we got tonight, do they go online as part of the packet after the meeting?
They can.
They don't currently?
They don't currently? Maybe that's something we'll want to look at in the future, but for now...
We can do that, although the...
The letters are a part of it.
The letters are, right, the letters are. So, but yeah, anything that comes up that isn't part of the packet, she can get you, but anything that's, that was a part of the packet we were given is on the, is on the website.
Okay, well, even if you had a laptop in the back that you could bring your own thumb drive to plug it into, I mean, you know, in the future. Obviously, having something available for anyone who doesn't have that access immediately would be grand, so I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Is there anybody else that would like to testify? Now, can I close the public hearing? All right, public hearing's closed, and I'll bring it back around the council for discussion. David, I was going to start with you.
Oh, thanks. So, there was a discussion during the hearing tonight about potential change of the job title from manager to executive director. The ordinance that went out in the packet did not include that, but we have one tonight that adds Section 6, and I'll read it in its entirety.
That was my question, okay.
A new Section 6 that reads that the title of the downtown manager shall be changed to executive director. That's it, it's imperative.
So once we vote that in, it's said and done, huh?
So that would be, I would, I would put that forward if the council wanted to adopt that tonight.
As part of the ordinance.
Or you're taking it to a second reading at the next meeting, we would have the revised one for you to look at.
Okay, anyway. So let's go around. Kelly, any, any comments you have on the renewal or not?
I think we definitely should renew it.
Okay, Kevin?
Sounds good to me.
Let's, Remy? Scott?
And myself.
Okay, so David gave us a couple options. We can either bring back for a second reading, or we can adopt the language, changing the manager to the executive title, and he can read the, as he reads the whole thing. So, that being said, what I'd like to do is if we want to do it with the change at the same time, I'll have David read it by title only with that change included in it renaming the manager to the executive director. So David, will you read that by title only, please?
I will. This is ordinance number 5005, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District created by ordinance number 4373, and extended by ordinances numbers 4445, 4518, 4595, 4671, 4747, 4808, 4873, 4926, 4967. Amending said ordinances and by adopting a proposed assessment schedule and role of the properties to be benefited with the addition of section number 6, that the title of the downtown manager shall be changed to executive director.
Okay, if I can do, have you do a second reading?
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 5005, an ordinance extending the duration of the McMinnville Downtown Economic Improvement Assessment District created by ordinances numbered 4373, and extended by ordinances numbered 4445, 4518, 4595, 4671, 4747, 4808, 4873, 4926, and 4967, by amending said ordinances and by adopting a proposed assessment schedule and role of the properties to be benefited with the addition of section 6, that the title of the downtown manager shall be changed to executive director.
Okay, thank you very much, David. So that being said, what I'll do is I'll ask Rose to poll the council. If you can poll the council president last, please, Rose.
Counselor Drapkin?
Aye.
Counselor Hill?
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Aye.
And Council President Jeffries?
Aye.
Let it show that ordinance 5005 passed the council unanimously, and those members present with a four-to-zero vote, with Counselor Yoder and Counselor Rudin absent. So, so I guess executive director, you can go out and work three times as hard now.
Not till August 1st.
Not till August 1st. You got to wait till August 1st. So congratulations, Rebecca. Good job, everybody, good job, everybody. Okay, that will take us on to our next public hearing tonight, and this is the public hearing regarding, Kelly mentioned regarding proposed 2016, 2017 proposed budget, as approved by the public, as by the Budget Committee. Again, this is a, actually, a legislative public, legislative public hearing. So what I'd like to do is open the pub, public hearing at this time, and what I'll do is have Marsha right now, have you give us a small staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, this public hearing is required by local budget law. It provides our citizens with an opportunity to comment on the 2016-17 budget, which was approved by the Budget Committee on May 18th. The financial summary for the 2016-17 budget was published in the News Register on May 31st, as is required by local budget law.
Okay, thank you, Marsha. At this time, what we'll do is we'll open it up to anybody who would like to speak on the proposed 2016-17 budget and potential additions, changes, or modifications to the budget. So I know, you brought something up. Would you like to come up and just get on record about what you'd like to see again? Since you stay, you're so nice and staying.
I did stay.
So that way, we make sure it gets edited in the budget meetings and the minutes. You'll need to, you don't need to swing on your, you don't need to sign in again, so...
Okay. My name is Elizabeth Stapish, and I would love to see some money allocated to our mental health and the drug problems that are going on in town. So I would love to see some money being spent on putting in some programs for actual drug rehabilitation, maybe an in-house treatment center, or maybe some actual mental illness beds, rather than just sending them to jail when we're having problems, so...
Let me finish right here. Let me finish right here. Okay, let me go around while you're sitting there and ask if anybody has any questions. Let's start with Remy. Remy, do you have any questions, comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, Scott?
I would suggest that you take the same message to the county where the funds are available for mental health and those types of programs. The state funds the county, and that's where the money for that type of program would sit. It's not necessarily at the, at the city level. We're charged with, one of the other things you'd mentioned, and that's having adequate protection on the streets with our police coverage and our fire coverage. But when it comes to programs that are to assist from the citizens, it happens at the county. And so, I just, I share that with you, not that we're not going to listen, but I think it would be maybe a little more appropriate to take it to the county and share with them.
Should I do that?
I can, I'll go over that later. Go ahead, Kelly?
I would reiterate what Scott's saying, and the county meets on a, every two weeks or every week?
Every week, and I'll go over the schedule.
Okay, and he'll give it to you, but yes, they're the ones that would deal with the mental health services and things like that. We do not have the funding for that sort of thing. However, we do definitely cover policing services, so...
Okay, council president Jeffries?
Just want to thank you for bringing this to my attention and attention to the council. I think none of us are really blind to these problems, but I think we're, like it's been said, we're kind of limited on the amount of money that we have. That isn't to say, though, that we can't partner with the county to, I guess, help create some synergy with the services that we have and the things that the county can do, but I think, I think it's appropriate to take it to the county and advocate alongside us for more of those services in town, because we definitely would support that.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. And I'll let you know that the county commission is by state, by state law, the Health and Human Services, which any drug advocacy programs, drug treatment, now health treatment programs that are shared responsibility between the state and the counties within the state, so therefore Yamhill County is in charge of designing, administering, delivering those kind of programs. And in Yamhill County, it just so happens that Health and Human Services are the largest programs in Yamhill County by far, taking up the most staff. But just to let you know that the county commission meets what they call an informal meeting. You can come to either on Tuesday afternoons, usually at 2:00, and if you go to, just do a Google search on Yamhill County, you'll see their website and their schedule. And then they meet in official, formal session at 10:00 on a Thursday, Thursday morning at, in the basement of the county courthouse, or is it 9:00? Mark, you remember if it's 9:00 or 10:00? 10:00, I believe. Well, anyway, and what I would do is actually take your request to the county commissioners and go over the, basically tell them the same thing you told us tonight, because council president Jeffries is correct. It's really a synergy between the city and between the county, and the county is mandated to run those kind of programs, or we're mandated to do the law enforcement and that sort of thing. So, and they could actually provide you, Rose can probably provide you part of the transcript of what you testified on here to go, but we'd advise you to go to the county commissioners, which is located in, and they can give you a sketch, located in the big White House on Fifth and Evans Street. It says Board of Commissioners, and go there, because you have a very good story to tell and advice, and they're the ones that are responsible for the allocation of the funds for Health and Human Services, but that's a good place to go.
Okay, and I had one other thing. One of the officers had mentioned something about when we do have somebody who, you know, is taken in for drugs, they usually end up taking them to jail rather than taking, apparently the only place we can take them is out to Portland. With us only having four officers on, that leaves us vulnerable in the community, because we don't have an officer to actually take these people out to the, I guess, Portland is where they would have to go for help. Is that anything that we can do here?
Matt, is that a transport, is the county responsible for that type of transport, or are we responsible for that type of transport?
No, we're on the hook for that, that's us.
So, how would normally, does it, if we don't have anybody on staff and somebody really needs to be transported to a mental health care, recovery facility in Portland, what happens?
If it's mental health issues, we, if you're speaking to mental health, well, I'm at Valley Medical Center, but we sit on that patient security concern. So, yes, she is correct, and that does reduce staffing on the road.
And I'm actually speaking more along the drug lines.
And that's a sense of real health.
We do, I'm not aware of any drug facilities we transfer persons to, but we do, in cases of alcohol poisoning or OD, sort of, our resources hoop up in Portland, which takes us, local medical facilities do not have detox, so we are stuck going to Portland on occasion.
And that does take somebody off the road, or do you call somebody in off-shift to do that, or is it...
If we go below minimums, they would be called in, most likely in the middle of the night.
Okay, that's, we weren't, thank you very much, that's very, very good. Okay, thank you very much. Do we have anybody else who would like to testify anything on the 2016-17 budget? Come on forward, Jody and Doug. You would have been better off if you left, if we left him at the back of the room. Doug, it's nice to see you, Mr. Hurl. We don't get to see you very much anymore.
Nice to see you, mayor.
So, Jody Christensen, executive director of the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. I've invited Doug Hurl to join me today. He's the president for McMinnville Industrial Promotions, one of our investors in the partnership along with you, and then McMinnville Water and Light. I'd also like to recognize Doug Montgomery and Nathan Nottingham. They're both board members for MEDP. Tonight, Martha asked me to just come before you and reiterate our original request. I realize that there's been a reduction, but I just wanted to give you some further information for your consideration as you move forward to adopt the budget. Before you, I have two documents for you to look at. One is this one, and in the interior of this is a four-page color insert. This was funded by an additional investment from McMinnville Industrial Promotions. This document is important because it's going to really relay some of the information that I'm giving you today. We, as you're aware, we went through a strategic planning process in December of 2015, which many of you were a part of. We also had extensive conversations with business leaders in the community as well as a variety of resource partners, those that provide services to our businesses and that we often rely on to help when we put together projects. So, we spent considerable time visiting with all of you and our partners. We did surveys, we did individual interviews, and the whole idea behind that is we wanted to make sure that we were providing the service and the level of service that we needed in our community from this economic development organization. What we discovered in that process is there was a real need and drive to focus around recruitment. We heard that over and over again, not only from you, our partners, but from our business community as well. They want to see stronger and a more vibrant category of companies here. It's good for everyone to have that strength. And so, what we did is we went back after we received that information, and we developed an action plan. Part of that action plan focuses on recruitment efforts. As you know, I've talked with you for the last 10 years about the need to, for expansion and retention of our existing businesses. That effort does not go away. This is actually an enhancement on top of that. What we're going to do, what we're planning to do with the additional investment, if this is, comes to fruition, we will be having a more targeted, focused recruitment effort. It'll be less of a general target, but we'll be very specific about how we're going to go out after new investment in our community. The insert that I referred to earlier is the launch of what we're calling the McMinnville Made Campaign, and this is really targeted to outside companies, outside stakeholders, decision-makers, to show them what it's like to have a business in McMinnville. We're showcasing the competitive advantage on the first page, low water, low electricity rates. We're showcasing the spectacular businesses that we have here and how they're thriving and successful. We're also highlighting the 26-acre certified site, the only certified site in Yamhill County, is also featured in that. That's an MIP property. And then on the back page, you'll note that we talk about workforce development, and that's really an area that we feel is a great way to show people how we're addressing talent, attraction, and development in our community. So, that's really what you're seeing there, that's the message we're carrying forward. We are currently investing in specific projects that are designed to get our organization in front of site selectors and decision-makers and make the case that McMinnville's a great place to bring your business. We're going to have a number of activities over the next year that really allow us to create marketing and messaging around that. On October 7th, the McMinnville Made Event is a day-long celebration of our manufacturing community. It also happens to be our 10th anniversary, but that's really the side note. We want to create and generate a buzz about McMinnville as a place where you can be a manufacturer and be very successful. We'll be featuring VIP tours, there'll be an expo luncheon. We have a number of manufacturers who are going to be participating in that. We're also proposing to have industry-focused site consultant appointments and prospect meetings. We've targeted Nevada, potentially in November, and Los Angeles in February and March. Both of those regions have been targeted by the state of Oregon as places that are very ripe, if you will, for the Oregon conversation about bringing businesses here. We also will be working very closely with SEDCOR, Greater Portland, and Ready, Redmond Economic Development Initiative. The four of us have come together in a partnership. We're investing in a consultant who's targeting six qualified leads. That means companies that are interested in moving to Oregon, and we will be hopefully having face-to-face conversations with those decision-makers. So, the idea is we're taking it from a very general message to a very specific and targeted message. That's what we believe is the right thing to do. We have a great asset here. We have a clear story to tell about the advantage of bringing your company to McMinnville, and we have three large sites, and so that's a very compelling story in that marketing. As you know, we also have McMinnville Works, which you've known first as an internship program, but that was just the beginning of the plan. The idea is that the internship program was just a place to start. We want to take it to the next level. This is really about helping our community and our businesses drive talent development and attraction. We want to make sure that our companies have the best resources, the best strategies in maintaining and attracting new employees. And so, we have a full menu of activities that we will be launching pending funding to help our companies in that area. And then finally, I wanted to talk a little bit about another proposed activity for our organization, and that would be to really highlight the development opportunities for real estate firms, development, and investors. We want to make sure that we have targeted conversations with people about the opportunity in McMinnville, and we think that we've targeted some really significant areas in the community where we can have very focused conversations about the possibility of bringing in new investment and development in the community. I've been referring to this three-page document that I provided to you. Really, at the end of the day, the bottom line is this organization is very busy, and I'm not going to stay here and say that we're not all busy. We are. We have had an increase of activity in our office, and it's my responsibility to make sure that we exceed expectations, not only from our partners and what we're responsible to do, but also to the business inquiries that we have. We can't let anything fall through the cracks. We have to make sure that we're on point at all times, that we're prepared to answer every question that comes through our door, so we want to make sure that we can do that to the best of our ability. On page three, there's a chart, and it's called MEDP 2016 Activity Report. This is normally an internal document that we would use to manage our pipeline. It has more detail. What I've done here is provided a, some data for you to look at. In the pipeline currently, we're managing projects that have proposed 922 jobs with over $65 million of capital investment. So, what I've done is I've tried to break down the types of projects that we're managing in our office, and so that you can get a sense of the compelling numbers and the importance and the value of the work that we're doing on a day-in-to-day-out basis. And so, this gives you a sense of the kinds of, the level of activity in our office. On top of, these are projects, on top of daily inquiries, as well as making sure that we are an engaged community partner with our various partners, like the Chamber, Visit McMinnville, and the Downtown Association. So, again, if I can answer any questions for you, I would be happy to. I will mention that Water and Light and MIP have had conversations about increased contributions as well. Water and Light is very favorable to the idea, and again, I brought Doug. MIP has also been favorable to the idea. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer if you'd like to ask Doug.
Doug, do you have anything to say, anything you'd like to say before we go into the questions?
Got a lot of things I'd like to say, Rick, but...
Well, yeah, but let's leave it to this, wouldn't you?
Just quickly, for those in the audience, McMinnville Industrial Promotions is who I'm here representing the board of directors for. We're a volunteer board. The company was started in 1955. Our largest shareholder, who actually owns our company now, is the McMinnville Charitable Foundation, is who owns 85% of McMinnville Industrial Promotions currently. We work for them free. It's all volunteer, has been since the 50s. We currently own and lease 125,000-plus square foot of property. We have over 60 acres of property that we also own. We have in excess of 300 and some jobs that are in the buildings that we do lease. So, we have been a major part of McMinnville for a long time, and there's nothing like a job to help out with taxes and increased revenues, so we can have an extra police officer, so we can have some mental health and help pay the county. There's nothing like a job, so that somebody can pay their taxes. And MEDP, when Jody came along, was like an angel that fell from the sky for MIP. We'd been looking for somebody, and we thought, boy, what are we going to do? And all of a sudden, here comes Jody, and here comes MEDP, and here comes the city as a partner, here comes Water and Light as a partner, and it's been a great partnership, I think, with the three of us. And I would just encourage the council to really take a look at the additional funding that she's requesting. And I'll say right now that if the county, or if the council does not, MIP will make up the shortfall that she's asking for. I will tell you that right now. As the president of MIP, we're not going to let Jody go anywhere, and if it's for $18,000, we're not going to let her not have that funding to do it, because she is a rock star. I was going to say a diva, but she's not. But she is really good at what she does, and she has, she has created something about McMinnville, the economic portion of McMinnville. You can't go out and find a building to lease for industrial space in McMinnville today, and sitting next to me is one of the main reasons why. MIP currently is in talks with a company to build a 50,000-square-foot building in the industrial park. We're also in talks to sell one of our buildings to one of our tenants, which is what we like to do, is build a building, rent it to our tenants at below-market, and then have them buy it, so then they have skin in the game in McMinnville. We want to grow it organically if we can, and it's been very successful for the city of McMinnville, and we hope for years to come. So, I highly would encourage your support of MEDP. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Doug. As we get started, I'd like to just say a couple things on myself. First of all, you know, as we know at our last budget committees, there were some good discussions on whether we give this funding to MEDP or in turn provide 100% increase in our funding for the bypass, which I also looked at very important as needed for economic development, because if we can't get the freight in and out of town, we can't get the job, the business located down. Based on that, one of my, my big issues was, and I really, I was telling Jody the other morning, that I really wish we would have had this table or this document during our original budget session, because I've had, the last several years, had a real issue, and it's not that I haven't told anybody about it, about, I think we did a great job of retaining or expanding, but I thought we were a little bit weak on recruiting, and most of it was because of my fault, because I didn't know what recruiting we were doing, and for that, I'll apologize. But then when I saw this document the other morning and said exactly how much is going into... into recruiting, I would not have even questioned myself at the last budget meeting whether we fund both the 18,000 additional for the bypass and the full additional, what MEDP says. So looking at these numbers, I am, and I think Councilor Mackey and I have had this discussion a couple of times, and I probably do, a couple of you sent out the wrong message or a message I regret sending out, but I just want everybody to know that I'm on total support after seeing these numbers and what's being actually used for recruiting of actually adding that money back into the, into the budget. So let's just go from there, and what I'll do is I'll start with Remy. Any questions, comments from you?
Well, what I like and what I'm seeing here, and I'm just not quick enough to have done anything beyond the, from this chart, that there were some of these that were really easy to do quickly, but I was just pulling up a calculator to do some of the other ones. What I'm getting at is what I like, that I see in here is that these jobs are good, high-wage jobs. These are the types of jobs that we need to be attracting to the city. And, well, we see a wonderful increase in tourism that we've largely supported and partnered with, and while that's a very positive thing, those also tend to be lower-wage jobs, the supporting positions that go along with that. So to see the potential here in these types of jobs, I've long been a believer, and I think, imagine that generally, the sentiment here is, although I won't speak for anybody else, that, you know, if you can attract high-paying jobs, as you said, you have more money in the budget, you have more money. More money leads to better schools, better schools attract great doctors and great, so on and so forth. And so, you know, having a strong economy, I think, is very much the basis for everything else that happens here. I remember that the percentage increase was high. I don't remember the exact amount, but I remember it was a significant percentage increase. But I understand that it's a matter of about 18, it's $18,000 is what you both said. So, you know, $18,000 to translate to $65.5 million to me is good math.
Okay. Thank you, Remy. Let's turn it over to Kevin. Why don't you go ahead?
Well, I'm a social studies teacher, not a math teacher, so I'll take Remy's word for it. No, he does look quite good, man. Thanks. I appreciate what you said, Mayor, about wanting to fund this fully, and I think we should.
Okay. Kelly, let's go to you.
I, this looks good to me, and I appreciate the need for recruitment, certainly. The only thing I would say, and I said it rather clearly the night of the budget meeting, not necessarily in regard to this, is I want to have the dollars to do it, and we've already spent those dollars. So my comment would be, is I'd like to look towards October to make a decision on this. That's just where I'm at. See how the monies are coming in from tax revenues, and if they're good, then I'll for it.
Okay, Scott.
You know, we've had this opportunity to build this partnership and this relationship, and Jody, we hear the accolades of other partners, and I hope you feel that the partnership between the city is exactly the same. We are critically looking at economic development. I mean, that's the lifeblood. I mean, that's why we have the vision of a transportation bond. That's why we have the vision of an urban renewal district. You know, we are taking steps to really provide seed money to grow this community, and you're a part of that. Thank you for the thoughtfulness of this document. I'm going to suggest that we really, as a partner, need to have better communication. I think that's kind of where we have a breakdown a little bit. We know the sensitive nature of this third page. Okay, there's no names, and we understand that. But to know what is in the pipeline, as you talked and as Doug addressed, gives us a sense of what we anticipate is out there, but we really don't know. So communication, we've really got to work on that communication between the council and so that you feel our full support. I'm inclined to say that I see the value, but there is a piece of me that says, I think we need to, we've had a good discussion at the budget committee level. I think we need to have another discussion with our full council here and with our city manager here, and I'm inclined to see how we can do this, but stay true to all the work that we put into the budget. I mean, it makes all the sense in the world, but I think we need to just put a fine pencil, and if that's October, let's see, you know, if we could say yes, it'll be October, how that works for you. And Doug, I appreciate that you said MIP would step up, but we still want to be that partner. We don't want to not be a partner that doesn't come up to the table and work with the partnership that we have. So just to summarize again, communication, I think, is really critical. Thank you for this. It helps tremendously, and I think more dialogue very quickly, so we all know where we're sitting and having a consensus with the full council. We can't bring Budget Committee back together, but we can, the standing part of the Budget Committee, which is the council, we can do what we need to do. So my thoughts.
And as an addition to that, just a little more of a timeline and putting it into context, some of this, I mean, I'd like to know how long some of this has been, well, I guess you do say how long the decision timeframe is, but how long prior to this have these been worked on? Are these, some of these numbers from prior years, too?
So projects can have a long life to them, and so...
I appreciate that, but that's why I'm asking for that context.
Right, so I can go back and refine some of the data points for you. What I wanted you to see is, projects that we're actively working, so we consider them open files, even though they may not have any activity, we consider them to still be something that we need to monitor and manage. So the decision points, those are, somebody, a decision-maker in that company is going to likely make a decision in this timeframe. That's the information I've provided to you. So I can give you additional information about how long, if you will, they've been in the queue. So I can certainly come back with that information for you as well.
That'd be great. David?
I guess I want to clarify the numbers. During the current fiscal year, the city's contribution was $30,000.
Forty thousand dollars, so your current...
Requested an increase up to 60.
Forty-two thousand, mhm. So...
We gave 40, they increased, they asked for up to 60, but we gave 2,000.
And you came back with 42.
Okay, so you increased it from 40 to 42, so the difference is the...
The total ask was 60. I've gone to every partner and discussed that. There's an equity, wanted to make sure that there was sharing in the three partners, mhm.
I just, I didn't remember what the starting point was and how much was...
So our fiscal year is a little bit different than your fiscal year. We are housed within the chamber, so we follow there, so our year starts October 1. So from a timing standpoint, I'll just say that this partnership is extraordinary, and I've said that to you many times, but I want you to understand that the, having a city walk with us in this work is very unusual. And the level of collaboration with city staff and just being able to come before you and have these kinds of conversations and have you really, you're in it with us, that's extraordinary. And so I, every day, thank, you know, my lucky stars, that I'm in a community and that I can serve this community and do this kind of work. Having partners like MIP and the Chamber and Water and Light, people ask me all the time how we do it, and I'm just going to be frank, it's something in the water here. This is rare to replicate this. So I fully appreciate, I also understand, this is difficult. This is a difficult decision for you. You have huge responsibility on your shoulders. You manage an incredible city, and you have to make critical decisions every day. I am putting before you a few reasons to maybe rethink how you and at the level that you invest in MEDP. We will continue this work. We will continue to serve you well. We will make sure that our businesses have what they need. We will reprioritize, and we will do this work and deliver on the mission that we've been hired to do. So it doesn't in any way, and I don't know if this shoots me in the foot or not, we're not going to back off on what we do and how we serve the community. We just may have to do it a little bit differently, and it may take us a little bit longer.
Well, and very much like the city. I mean, those difficult decisions are tough, and, you know, we've been through some recessionary times where we really had to cut to the bare bones, and we've gone without, and so that's why it makes it really, these decisions where we're loosening the belt just a little bit, we've got to go back and start filling where we've taken away. And I think personally, it gives real credit that we be very critical in that process, because we've got to do it right, is my thought.
I think, in my last closing, and I hate to see Jody and even Doug being so humble out there, but, you know, I guess in my closing is, is sitting also as the chair of the Water and Light Commission, and the Water and Light Commission discussing these things. I guess one of my things, and I think we have a very supportive Water and Light Commission, just like we have a very supportive MIP Board, and I think it was Doug, I don't feel comfortable, and I think if the council wishes to wait till October, I think that's great, but I don't personally feel comfortable that the message it sends to the other main partners, such as City Water and Light and MIP, that we look at the potential number, and we do have to do some, we're spending more money, we should. But to me, it's not whether necessarily that we just grant that $18,000. To me, it's more of what message are we sending to two of our critical partners, and that means a lot to me also, because we're looked at as the leader, we're looked at as the leader. And, but I think, you know, if the council wishes to have that discussion, I think, Scott, it's valid to have the discussion with the entire council here, and if their budget year starts in October, I want to make sure we have this, either August or someplace, so we can go over this, because I don't want to go, I don't want to hold this over into their next fiscal year.
Yeah, I think our notes ought to note that we need to address it as a council with everyone here, because they were all here at the Budget Committee meetings, and I think we just need to be true to what, the process.
Yeah.
And again, I'm not saying it has to be October 1st, but I think very shortly we need to come together.
Shortly. And, you know, I rely on, to tell you the truth, I, she may not think so, but I rely on Kelly a lot to give me good information, and this is one of those times that I kind of wish I would have done it a little bit differently than I did, because I think it might have sent some of the wrong messages, let some of the people down, but I realize sometimes you do that, and you only, you learn by what you do, and you move on and get stronger for it. So just so they realize, I think, whereas we're all really behind, we do have some other numbers to crunch, but we will take a look at this. We can approve the budget as it is and then do an amended budget, right, Marcia? We can take a look at this and then do an amended budget, and we'll ensure that we get that done in plenty of time for you to know, so...
So I just want to make sure, if you need me to come before you, if you need me to provide more information in the next couple of weeks, I can do that? Or is this something where you're thinking, maybe I'll come back and...
We'll reach out as we...
Okay.
We'll have Marcia reach out.
Perfect.
It could be because of July's, usually we only have one meeting in July, and July's usually, it could be the second meeting in July, it could be the first meeting in August, you know, or somewhere around there. But it's not something you have to do within a week or two weeks. You've got to get out there and get more businesses.
Okay.
Do some, do some more recruiting.
I can do it if you need it.
Anyway, Doug, Mr. Hurl, thank you very much, and come around more often, would you?
I will. Thanks for having me.
And Jody, thank you, once again, it's very much appreciated. And believe me, the work you do is, like Doug says, the work you do isn't taken lightly, so...
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, so what I'll do at this time, I were in that public hearing with, yeah, is there anybody else who would like to testify on the budget? I didn't see any hands go up earlier. Mark, come on forward. I knew we weren't going to get through a meeting without you coming forward.
Well, after that last presentation, I've got to say something. I'm sorry.
Oh, jeez, you think you're sorry? Go ahead, Mr. Davis.
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington here in McMinnville. I'd like to just briefly recall, some of you were at the Budget Committee, but not all of you were there. And this, the reason that the money was taken away from MEDP was because the Budget Committee wanted to give money for a lobbyist in Washington DC for the bypass. And basically, the Budget Committee was given two choices. One was to take some of our city street money, gas tax money, and the other alternative was to reduce the amount of money going to economic development. You know, personally, I would rather see money going to Jody and MEDP than to some lobbyist back in Washington DC. So I don't know what the answer is on this. If this is zero sum, then, you know, I would support that action. If you're adding some money from another source, that's fine. I do strongly object to you raiding the city street fund again to, you know, pay for the bypass. You've already done $2 million in that area, and I just think that's inappropriate. I mean, if there's going to be some pain somewhere, I think it needs to be shared, it needs to come out of the carryover balance or some other funding source. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions? Go ahead, Kelly.
The reason we're saying October is we do not know truly what the funding will be until approximately October. We calculate conservatively. We've been very fortunate in past years to have been, got a bonus in October that our tax revenue is actually higher than we anticipate. So that is why the October deadline is there, and if there is that excess revenue, then maybe we can spend a little more. But frankly, I'll fight it tooth and nail otherwise. So, and yes, I agree with you on the street fund.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Nathan, come on forward.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Nathan Nottingham. Where do I live? 3593 Northeast Harvest Drive, and President and CEO of the Chamber. In that capacity, I want to address that the Chamber is continuing an ongoing support of MEDP, both as a board member and partner, and then also as a co-economic development organization. Jody does a great work. And in one point, my understanding of the history of MEDP and what has gone on, it is an organization that the Chamber continues to support, although we don't write the largest check, we write it in-kind, and if general calculation proposed that we actually support them at just under $40,000 a year in in-kind support by housing them and taking care of all the efforts that they do. And that money is paid by the membership dues of our 464-member businesses in McMinnville, which benefit specifically by the work that MEDP does. So we just encourage the council to consider the funding of MEDP, as you've discussed. I know this is kind of a secondary backup to what you've already talked about, which sounds great, but we just would throw in with you that this is an organization to continue to support. You have four legs of an amazing economic table now in McMinnville, which is unique. And as Jody called out, many cities look at it and are envious of what is going on here, and that it is something to continue to support in all ways. So thank you for that.
Hey, thank you, Nathan. Any questions for Nathan? So when's your last day again, Nathan?
July 22nd.
July 22nd.
We'll talk to you before then.
We'll miss you, buddy.
Thanks.
Okay, anybody else who'd like to speak on the revised budget for 2016-17? If not, I will close the public hearing, and I think we're not taking any action tonight, except we will be, discuss this, and you'll get with Martha and everything, David, since you're the acting, and Jody will work with Martha, and we'll get this back in front of us.
Yeah, I guess the only question I'd have is if the council, you know, from the discussion, I'm not sure that there was a majority here or consensus of having us make any modifications to the budget.
Not tonight, not tonight.
That would be presented to you at the next meeting, so, you know, having said that, but you...
I don't think there would be any modifications, actually, until closer to October.
Yeah, I understand that. We, if the council, based on the testimony tonight, wanted to see some modifications to... to see some modifications to the budget before it came back to you, then staff would need to spend some time working on that prior to the next meeting, but it doesn't sound like that's the direction that things are going, so.
No, I expect, you know, if we approve the budget, we'll approve it as it was approved by the Budget Committee, and then do an amended budget if we, if we need to.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, that one, that one's done. That will take us into our last public hearing, and this is the proposed use of state revenue sharing for the 2016-17, so. Marcia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In order to receive the state shared revenues, the city must hold a public hearing at which the citizens have the opportunity to provide comments to the City Council regarding the proposed uses of state revenue sharing funds for fiscal year 2016-17. The Council will adopt the actual uses of state revenue sharing as part of the budget adoption resolution that will come before the Council on, at the June 28th meeting. And you have before you a list of the proposed uses of state revenue sharing.
Okay, thank you, Marcia. So that being said, now I'll open it up for testimony from anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on the actual use of the state revenue sharing as it's listed on the Board as part of our budget. Does anybody like to speak to the Council on anything on the use of state revenue sharing? And again, just remember, we're very limited, as like Marcia said, of what we can use state revenue sharing for in the budget, it's not something we get, we can just use however we feel, and these are some of the issues that we've determined that it would be well, and normally, these are the same, every year, the same type of categories that come up, so. Anybody like to speak on the use of state revenue sharing? Okay, hearing done, I will close the pub, I'll close the public hearing, and so then that will come back in front of us next month, again, for also for approval, right?
That's correct. It'll be embedded within the budget that you approve through the budget resolution at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Marcia, very much. Okay, that will take us to new business, and we have, first thing, is a presentation by Dave Larmouth from Recology Western Oregon regarding the proposed rates, so. Gee, you don't look like David. You look like Fred.
My name's Fred Stemler, 1850 Lafayette, and I'm standing in for Dave today. Okay, thank you for inviting us to speak today, or myself to speak. We've got, this is kind of our annual discussion about rate reviews associated with the franchise for the collection of recycled compost and waste in our community. So the way that the franchise is structured here is that we essentially have a target operating margin that we strive to hit. If we operate within that range, we're eligible to collect a CPI adjustment from the same CPI measurement every year. So this year, that number came in at 0.5%. That would be the rate adjustment for the large majority of collection throughout the community, with the exception of an adjustment associated with a subcomponent associated with compactor hauls, which is the haul fee. The reason why that has an isolated adjustment, which is actually 20% for that subcategory, is because of the additional time associated with pulling a compactor versus a standard debris box. So to go one step further with that adjustment, is essentially, a compactor is hooked up to some sort of hydraulics, and it requires to get out, unhook, and essentially disengage the system before hauling it. A standard debris box, the truck can back directly up and lift that box and take it to its destination, so it's a significant difference in both pickup and delivery, and we're trying to essentially create the rates so that they actually reflect the time of service required to service. Other than that, we're looking at the proposal. You can see, there's four pages of rate sheets, so it's, I won't go through each individually unless you'd like to, but the most, the most common service, essentially, 32 gallon weekly, it's 10%, or a .10, it's a dime, would be the rate impact. For a 90 gallon weekly, you're looking at a 16 cent adjustment. At that proposed rate adjustment, it's 0.5%. We did present an option B as well, to expand the collection of organics and food waste collection throughout the community. Under that scenario, it's a bit of a speculative move until we actually get the program up and running and see the level of subscription that takes place. What often happens when you roll out a large diversion program is that essentially, you're taking product and material that is coming, that's currently going in the waste stream, and that moves into that new service, so it allows people to downsize in their subscription. So someone who may have 90 gallon weekly waste service, it's estimated that households on average throw away anywhere between 30 and 40% of their disposal is food, waste, or yard debris trimmings, so if you remove 40% of what you throw out in your waste, and you put it into a diversion stream like a compostable collection, like we're proposing in option B, you now open the option to move from, you know, weekly service to bi-weekly service, or even once a month. So these are, these are two menu options that we essentially proposed for your consideration, one being a 0.5% rate adjustment for the vast majority of the rates, or we can entertain option B and start out with a 5.5% rate adjustment, and we'll essentially go through this process where we open up the books on an annual basis. If, if the costs are up or down, we will adjust and essentially have an open book process through this.
Okay.
All right, I apologize, this would also include the option to have a glass collection.
Right. Okay, any questions, say, this is our annual rate increase? I think the questions that we have is whether we want to go with the option A, and if we look at that, or if we want to consider option B, which includes that, I think I have some of my own ideas, but what I'd like to do is go around, any other questions for Fred or comments? Let's start with you, Scott.
Fred, thank you. Let's, let's talk a little bit about option B, where we're looking at collecting the, I, it's kind of wet garbage, and, and I know Portland has gone through that process, and I think there was, you know, initially, it was embraced, and then there was, there was a smell factor, if I remember correctly, and, and so there's a lot of learnings, because we're not, we're not the first one to look at this, so could you give us some industry successes, or things that might be hold back to that, that type of collection, and how communities handle that?
Yeah, so contamination is a major issue that comes along with collecting commercial food waste and residential food waste, so people essentially are non-compliant, and they will include products that can't go through the decomposition process. That requires screening on the front end, screening on the back end essentially adds costs associated with the process. Now, in the news as well, is that essentially, if you're, if you are going through composting and you, and the piles don't turn, they essentially go static, they do start to emit odors, so part of that is just how you manage the piles, and Recology has definitely, you know, gone through its learning curves at different sites. The Nature's Need Site in North Plains has been in the news three years ago, when they went through their permitting process, and definitely went through lessons learned, so it's, it's not bulletproof. You can't get it all the time. The good news is, is that we have a processing site here, we also have another processing site in Almsville, and both have capacity, so ultimately, right now, we take type 1 compost here, it's essentially, if you can grow it in your yard, it gets processed there. We don't take the leftover pizza and lasagna, is essentially what type 3 is. If we can keep those streams separated, we could potentially reroute those products out to Almsville. It's a, it's a different composting process there as well, it's a reverse aeration. Ours here is static windrow. It's essentially, the reverse aeration takes significantly less time, you're pumping air through the process in order to speed up the process, whereas the static windrow is very traditional composting. You're just turning it and letting the sun and the environment break it down. So we, we manage it, is, is, is the easiest way I could tell you, it's, it's, it's not bulletproof, but.
And then, would there be another container for the collection of that at each household? How does that work?
Yeah, as it is right now, you would roll out a third container in the stream, the third container actually already exists on a subscription basis throughout the community. A lot of people elect to subscribe to the yard debris service, so anything that you trim, anything that you grow in your yard, go there, food prep, and then.
It would be a combined, unless you took the foods and sent it to Almsville, right now, we're looking at a combined yard and food. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. So if, if you have any type 3 inside the process, it becomes essentially, if 5% of the, of the product, which is probably about what the profile would look like, based on what we generate here, it would ultimately be a very small amount of food relative to how much we inbound from, from yard debris trimmings and what at the, at the facility. That would all blend together, it would be a type 3 operation.
And you're saying you'll process that here, or in Almsville, or you don't know yet?
All of those options remain viable, so we are permitted here to do type 1, type 3. I'm, I'm very much aware of the proximity of our facility to the surrounding community, and we do active outreach to make sure that we're holding up our commitment here, so if odors become an issue, it's going to get transported.
Okay, Kevin?
No questions?
Remy?
Oh, I'm aware of some, a lot of successes, some of failures came up earlier, but I know all of King County, which is, you know, includes Seattle and its greater metropolitan areas, includes the composting that we have is optional here, and I, and I think there's this, I think that that's even a little bit more inclusive, that people can put things like their pizza scraps or whatnot in it, but, and having both visited and done a fair amount of business in that area, I've seen that as a really successful program for a very large, a very large population of people, and also, it kind of goes along with some of the other goals that we've been working on, some of the work that's been presented to us by Zero Waste, that's a lot of what they're doing in their programs right now with diversion and trying to keep things out of the landfill, and certainly, that's another entity we've been looking at partnering with. What I'm not really clear on is, in this, so I see clearly what the percentage increase is with option A, I don't have that in my packet, I don't, does, do.
Option B, or?
Yeah, no, this, this rate schedule's not in my packet, so I don't see, is it in my packet? No, it's not. So what I don't see is what the adjustment is on option B.
So the two most common services that are subscribed, we have an exhaustive menu, we essentially have not said no when, when alternatives or add-ons have been asked, so that, that is decades of rates evolved. Our two most common are 90 gallon weekly and 32 gallon weekly, so the rate adjustment would be $1.84 to $35.45 per month for a 90 gallon weekly collection, it's the largest container to residents. The 32 gallon weekly is another very popular option, and that's a $1.10 per month rate adjustment in order to add glass and this yard debris collection for this 5.5% initial kickoff. That, that may not encompass the entire cost of the program, but that would be the starting point in which we would go, roll the program out, and then reassess at the end of a year and see, you know, how the metrics are working.
Okay.
So this is, this is by far, hands in a way, the leaps and bounds towards getting to a waste zero kind of community here. It's, these aren't things that I would propose doing if I wasn't comfortable, that we could hold up our commitments on this end, but that is my word, and I, I understand, that's only worth so much to a lot of the community, but for, for what it is worth.
Is this available on a voluntary basis? I mean, you'd make the decision, or will it just be everybody will get this?
Yes, so as I envision this, it would, it would essentially roll out, so if you were a new customer and you were starting service, you're going to set up 32 gallon weekly, and with that comes recycling and a green waste container. So this way, you're, you're really promoting the service at its fullest potential and getting people started off at the right level.
So it ceases to be an add-on service? It becomes part of the regular service?
Yeah, right now, it's, it's, I cannot remember the exact rate associated with your, your green waste, but essentially, the cost of the additional.
$10 a month, I think.
Right.
And it's every other week, and it's every other week.
Right, so you drop from, if you were, say, at $33 a month for your 90 gallon, you drop down to the 21 every other week and add your, your bi-weekly green waste.
And then how do you address it with existing customers? How do you, what's your plan?
Probably similar to what we did in Yamhill County when they elected to roll out recycling countywide, so we essentially just have a rollout, we deliver containers to every, every residence. Could also have an opt-in period where people call and add it in, it's, there's several ways to do this. For, for our footprint and where we are here in McMinnville, I think you would just have a organized rollout, and we would essentially, we would essentially gear up on our carts and have them ready, and then over a two-week period, deliver them throughout the community.
And how do you deal with multifamily residential areas where you have apartment complexes and things like that?
They may require a unique solution. They are by far and away the major contributors to contamination in larger cities. We have very few, actually, in this community relative to larger areas like Portland, so one, it's not as significant of a problem, and two, it's probably easier for us to get effective outreach going, so we have waste zero specialists here in town, his name's Scott Law, and I think it would be, you know, if there was a homeowners association involved, be going out and speaking to an HOA, you'd be talking to the property manager. Sometimes space constraint is also an issue when you're looking at a multi-unit, where are they going to store it? How are they going to, where I used to live in a major city, we had containers down in the parking garage, and so you'd have all of your compost containers in one area that wasn't obstructing traffic flow. Recycling was in a different area, and garbage was in a separate, so every, every multifamily unit almost needs a custom solution.
But the format stays largely the same with the green bins, or truly a custom solution in every aspect of?
We would try and be consistent in containers, yes, so hypothetically, it should translate.
Hypothetically. About the glass, what do you do with that?
Well, right now, or?
Container.
With the collection?
Yeah. Because you're saying the glass would also be recycled, would it all go into that one container?
No.
No.
No, so Oregon's, Oregon, the Department of Environmental Quality has been explicit that they do not want to see glass in the commingle, which is inconsistent with what takes place in California and Washington, but there is some, there is some merit to the argument, and we're actually seeing some of the cities, I just saw a presentation by the City of Vancouver and some other franchise markets up in Washington, they are actually now trying to pull the glass out of the commingle container, because it essentially breaks down, and it contaminates other products, so small shards of glass will get inside of aluminum can, or inside a plastic container, or wedged inside a cardboard. In Oregon here, our mills process a lot of those fibers as a secondary use, and that glass then gets into their filters and slows down and breaks their operations, so the mills have, you know, been given consideration.
So do we have a separate container then for the glass, too?
Yep.
One, two, three, four.
Currently, your glass.
It's a lot of containers.
You're going to need a fifth one for when you come by the depot with your used clothes.
Let's see which one goes out.
Get a UGB amendment to put some more property on the back of your house, store your containers.
And how would you deal with it on scheduling? I mean, would that be an issue? Is it going to be a bunch of people frustrated that they have to remember, or is it going to be, is it? Or is it going to be, is it going to be consolidated so that everything would come through on the same day?
Most likely not. You're probably going to have off schedules. So, we do try and align them where possible, but you don't have the same capacity in vehicles by product type. So, for my household, for instance, I create maybe thirty-five to forty gallons worth of waste with four of us in the household on a bi-weekly basis, and I'm ninety gallons of recycle almost consistently every two weeks. So, if I send, if I have them on identical service days, the recycling truck is going to fill up twice as fast as the garbage truck, and that's more time on route. So, by that logic, if you have any sort of consistency in the collection, the recycle truck is going to meet a full day schedule in far less customers than the garbage route would follow it, which would be great if that was our problem throughout the entire community. I mean, we'd be making a whole lot less waste. But, it doesn't match up, you know, stop for stop, lift for lift, so.
And do you have options for, if the option B, which personally I think is the better, more far-reaching in terms of reaching into the future, I think that's the better option. But, do you also have financial hardship options? Or do you have a way of dealing with, you know, a ten cent increase is a lot easier to deal with than a dollar eighty-four, even though a dollar eighty-four is not huge, it still adds up? Do you have any options like that within your company? I always like to ask that type of question, even though it's very open-ended.
Generally speaking, no. We do work with people. There's certainly people who have hard times, and they'll call rather than stopping their service and pulling their containers. We take an IOUs. We kind of work on handshake still with customers that have proven to have an integrity. There's other people who game it on a monthly basis, and we can count on them calling and trying to work every angle. So, it's a case by case. Generally speaking, because of, we have forty-five thousand customers, actually, when you consolidate all, we try and stick to policy and general rules, just to keep it simple.
You know, let me, let me ask this question in your process, and maybe David, you might be able to answer it. If we would adopt, I like the option B myself, too, because I think it leads us where we want to go. But, if we would go ahead and recommend, and I say, I don't think we take any action tonight, I think this comes to our next meeting when we actually take action, or do we have to take formal action, or is it just by the ordinance, since they're entitled to, as long as they don't exceed, I think it's automatic, isn't it?
Yes, the way that the franchise is structured.
Yeah, go ahead. It's probably going to be something I was going to ask, but go ahead.
So, would it be possible to opt out of the additional bins at a reduction in your rate, or it just, you just wouldn't get that service?
Really, I mean, this can be made anyway. We, I think for, to get at both of these areas, we have time to structure this in any way. If this is something that, you know, this is essentially can be informational, option B can be informational tonight, we can research this more because in reality, this program wouldn't roll out until October. This is not, with the size of this, it's not just in, I have to order equipment, I have to get trucks and routes ready. This would be, this would be a new hired position. So, we have time to essentially build this, and if there wants to essentially be, if we want to look at rates for hardships, economic hardships, or discounts under specific conditions, I would be happy to have that discussion as well as opt-out adjustments if somebody chooses.
That's why I asked that. That's why I asked that question, that if we were, since it's the automatic, if we go with option A, since they meet the requirements where that new rate rolls in automatically, if we can't come back and look at, get a little bit better educated, because I know there's a lot more, I would like to know about the full green option and how it affects and the kind of programs, that if we can't spend a couple months doing that, and then if we say, okay, we went with option A, because that's automatic, now let's roll in this other option.
Well, and I would suggest that option B is looking at full participation, because you have the economies of scale of what you've got to do. It would be much like just the green service today. You know, if we only have a few that go, it's more expensive, and so, we get the economies of scale if we do it as a community. And so, I would think that you'd almost have to require everyone to take, to take that to get the economies of scale.
But, if we're adding another can, that's like another thirty bucks, isn't it?
No.
No, am I misunderstanding this somehow?
No, the rate adjustment here would cover.
Rate adjustment.
The five point five percent.
Dollar eighty-four increase instead of a ten cent.
It would be put in with whatever else we're doing.
Yeah, so it's, the economies of scale is exactly right. So, if you, if you have one hundred customers that elect to sign in, that is really why it is, say, a ten dollar charge to have a subscription of green, because there's only a fraction of the participants that are using it. So, I send a truck to every corner essentially of McMinnville to pick up, you know, one twentieth of the city's population, as far as customers go. So, the truck is grossly underutilized.
More service for.
More service.
And I, you know, I really like option B. I just don't know if I know enough right now about the different options, and there's some things that I just want to.
Has anything been discussed about this in the paper or anything? I mean, I mean.
Not really. Well, see, that's, I'm not so sure we're ready to go there yet.
We would be more than happy to come back and.
But, I'm not sure we're ready to go there.
But, we can give the standard, we can do the standard option A right now, because they follow within the requirements of option A. So, we can grant that option A, well, we don't have to grant it, because it's automatic, it's more of a presentation. Then we can ask Fred, National Ecology, to come back and give us some more information. And then, I imagine, Fred, it would be if we implemented an option A at the additional cost then, then we go to this option B, whatever you have listed here, then it would be the differential between, because we've already given, given one increase.
Then partial steps.
Right, so then it would only be the differential difference.
Yes, we would absolutely adjust the calculations to reflect any changes.
Would there be any kind of public communication, though, about this? I think that's very important.
We would, I think, as a council, since it's a franchise with us, I think the council, we would want, and we might even have Director Ecology to do some town halls, come back, present to us. We would have a couple, couple presentations in front of the council and make sure we can get a lot of attendees here, so we're not just making a decision.
I think under those circumstances, I'd.
Much like everything else, there's a learning on our part. If we feel comfortable, then there's a learning on the community part. It's a process that we have to go through.
Yeah, we're more than happy to participate.
So, when would the rate effects roll out?
The zero point five percent?
Yeah.
July one.
July one, by which is required.
And option B, right now, that would be open-ended?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
And option B, I mean, I'm pretty, I think I'm the only person sitting up here that would be just, that would say, no, just rip off the Band-Aid and go with option B and recology, do some aggressive education of the public over the next three weeks. So, feeling, sensing that, I don't think that that's, have to be dealt with. But, how soon could you roll out option B?
Realistically, it would start in October.
So, if we were to approve option B, no matter what, it couldn't, or approve, but if we were to look at option B, no matter what, it couldn't start until October? So, then you would have between now and October to do public relations and information?
Correct. So, if council gave me direction that this is the way we want to move forward, I would begin the planning process to theoretically start in October with this new program. We would proceed July one with a zero point five rate adjustment. And then, once the program came into place, we would use this as essentially a benchmark and adjust rates once the services began.
I think, Remy, to me, it's, maybe, I'd like the other council to speak, it's very important that before we go where you're talking about, and I like the idea, too, but once we, as a council, feel sure that we're educated and we know all the information, and if that could be by August or whenever it is, then we can set a date saying, if we like this way, saying to recology and saying to Fred, okay, go ahead, and we feel fine now that we can talk about it intelligently, now start your public education, let's shoot for October, November, or when it, whenever it is, but make sure that we understand it first.
Well, how much more public education do we actually need? I don't know. There really isn't that huge an adjustment in the rates. If you're doing it the way you're saying you're doing it, I don't know that it's that abrasive.
I mean, I also think there's a common sense aspect to this here that, you know, common sense tells us that the things that we're going to be concerned about are going to be odor, and that's what the public's going to be concerned about. The ins and outs of how the recycling works, I mean, that's not necessarily our job to need to know that. And so, if we look at kind of, you know, trying to move things, to push things forward and to not say, okay, well, wait, come back in, you know, after three months of education about composting and garbage and recycling, I mean, it's a service that's already being offered with no complaints. They're saying there would be, that Fred could build in and opt out if somebody really said, no, I don't want an additional bin. I don't understand, I agree, education is very important. In this, in this, we're not talking about big money. I don't understand the need to pull the reins on it and say, hold on, let's approach it more slowly. We already have a number of months.
Got about four months before October hits, or three and a half, anyway.
Fred, let me ask you a question. Depending on how the other issue goes with the potential transfer station. If the council should decide, whatever we decide to do, how would that impact the design or the building or whatever you, whatever's done if the, if the transfer station is approved?
How does this option B relate to the transfer station application? They're completely unrelated.
Well, I know, but you want, if we approve, what I'm saying is, they're unrelated.
Yes.
But, if we approved option B.
Yes.
Would it change the way you may design or build the transfer station?
No.
Okay, so that's, that's really just, if, whether we approved it a year from now, what you do at the transfer station, what we do with this new rate, with the green rate if we included the option B, it has nothing to do at all with what you would do with the transition.
So, taking your question on the fly, so I will consider this, you know, further after we talk, but traffic is the first thing that comes to my mind, and the net impact is a reduction in traffic with option B, because you have people less motivated to self-haul their material to our facility, and you're essentially taking one hundred vehicles, you're taking fifty vehicles that are driving in and putting it into one garbage truck, one compost truck, and dropping it off at one visit versus fifty cars coming down Lafayette Avenue currently. Our traffic studies for the transfer station application are measured based on current traffic flow analysis, so the net effect is a overall reduction in the traffic in the community. So, I, it looks good to me.
And so, the transfer station would only be the hardcore garbage that's going to another site. You take, internally, you'll take everything else where it needs to go.
Yes, the transfer station is two-part, recycling as well as the waste transfer. All the compost is.
Council President Jeffries has a question.
Yeah, I think, Kevin, I can, I think I have confidence in your ability to implement this most, I really do. And I think that, I agree with Remy, it feels like we should just make this leap, and I think you couldn't, I can say it with confidence, because they're not going to be able to do this tomorrow. It's going to take some time for this to get ready.
Yes.
I have a sneaking suspicion that Zero Waste, McMinnville will probably want to help you do some education and get involved in this as well. I mean, this is, there's a lot of people who.
Well, this is part of our overall goal, too.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, it's really sustainability and the zero waste.
Yeah, so I think he needs the direction, and I think it sounds like we're going to get to, we're going to want to do option B sooner rather than later, and I think, I think we can do it. I think he's going to continue to do option A as he's implementing option B, so I think we're.
And I think there's adequate time for education, frankly.
Absolutely, let's do it.
Particularly if zero waste is involved.
Yeah, I'm looking back, I just want to look back at a few notes here for a minute.
And Rose, can you make sure that we have availability of the rate sheets for those that weren't, didn't have a part of the packet? And I don't have a part of the packet.
Oh, I do.
You do?
I do.
Okay, so it must have been that latter one, and I think when Scott brought up our new units, we got an older one, okay. Maybe that's.
I downloaded mine this afternoon.
I downloaded mine just right as I came. Well, I mean, I downloaded.
You know, council, what I'd like to do, because we are going to have a motion in front of us, that's why I wanted to look at mine regarding what we do with this all tonight, and there isn't a lot of people, since it was just scheduled as a presentation, there isn't a lot of people here to testify, and I don't know if we'd have more would like to testify in favor or opposed, but being that it was really a presentation, and I'd really like to have where more people could have an opportunity to even give us some input. I think it's the right thing to do. But, I think that being said, if we elect to do the, being, he's going to say, to at least October, and it's going to take, it's going to do that, if the council doesn't mind, I think we, and he doesn't mind, I have a pretty good, somebody that I kind of listen to a lot, not all the time, of course, but has a pretty good idea on things, and I was wondering if, even though it's just a presentation, if Mark, if you might have, I know you're big into the recycling and do, if there may be any comments you might have, because I think the council says what you take pretty seriously sometimes.
Come on down, Mark.
Come on, come on, Mark, or just stand up. You could say there, you could do whatever you want. Because I'm really interested in hearing what your takes on this, because you're a pretty good representative.
I really like the idea of the council getting into this in a little more depth, but I'd encourage you to go beyond option B. I'm all for option B, but I'm, I think we need to have a serious conversation about what does zero waste mean? What does waste zero mean? I mean, you know, are they operating on the same definition? And then, when I look up at this schedule, this is based on generating waste, and I think that's a good idea. You know, we're basically subsidizing all this recycling by charging the people that are creating garbage. Well, what if we actually pay attention to the waste zero slogan he's got on the side of the trucks and the zero waste people, you know, downtown at all the festivals saying, you know, let's stop creating this garbage? How are we going to pay for all of this stuff? I mean, I think there needs to be a discussion, and I'm fairly certain that recology has other communities that are a little farther along in this process than we are, that maybe we can start talking about, how are we going to pay for this in the future? Because we don't want them to go out of business, because they're trucks. I mean, I agree with him completely. I went over there to try to get a couple buckets of sand the other day, and I was stopped out on, on the, you know, I couldn't even get in the door. I had to wait for half hour of all the people dumping their debris. And, you know, I'd rather see the trucks coming in, you know, down in our neighborhoods and hauling everything away than all of the pickups, you know, in line there trying to get in to dump. So, I mean, I think there's bigger question here that, you know, that we ought to, you know, be thinking about, how are we going to do this? You know, what are we looking at ten years from now, and how are we going to slowly get to that point? Because I can't imagine this structure would work if we really did away with, with most of the garbage.
That's why we appreciate your comments. You know, Mark, you said something, and I think Fred's had, it didn't really dawn on me a lot until I heard about the second time, was, I'm thinking about traffic going into the recycle center, and if ever, I know if I had, if I, I don't subscribe, of course, I have a truck, but I don't subscribe to the lawn debris, but I could tell you what, if I had a cart, you know, a small thirty-five gallon or thirty-two gallon cart, lawn debris cart or green cart, I'd probably be making quite a few less trips out there than I do myself. So, I think that, just that part, the transportation of, on our streets and going in there makes, I think, and I think it also addresses, Kelly, you said, one of our goals, and I think it does address one of our goals.
And in all honesty, three carts plus another thing for glass, I don't know what that will be. I'm thinking people are going to start thinking, maybe I want to try something different. Maybe I need to reduce some things here, or at least think about it differently.
Just with Ken and I, we're just, we're just like Fred, our, every two weeks, our recycle, our fifty-five or ninety gallon recycle bin is full, and every two weeks, our small thirty-five gallon, gallon garbage, it's hard to find stuff to put it, even fill it up. We could probably get by with ones a month.
I had some diapers I can dump in there.
No. I want the smells, I don't want them in my backyard.
Would you take shredding, too?
Well, Mr. Mayor. Well, Mr. Mayor, I always love to follow your lead, Mr. Mayor, but on this one, I really feel like we can give the thumbs up on moving forward on option B and, and allowing those conversations to happen over the next, over the, over the next number of months. I, I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it needs more time.
I agree with Remy and Kevin.
That's fine, I don't have it, I don't have really an issue with that. Remy, so that means we do have a, and Mark, I like your comments, but because I think that is very good, and I think for Recology's own wellness of the company, they also have to look at, too, what, if, if we take this off where we want to take it off, what is it going to mean? I mean, that's a big issue, so. Thank you again, Mark, for your comments. I appreciate them, I know what you're thinking. So, we would, go ahead.
So what I, what I'd ask is, I, I think there's clear direction here for staff to put together a resolution to bring before the council for the, at the next meeting with the details of, of what option B is and the rate increase. I just, I haven't had an opportunity to review the franchise agreement, I want to make sure that we're doing it properly.
Well, it says, it says here on, Mark, evidently, you didn't talk, Mark, because it says on the script that we can do, I mean.
Yep, Mark, no, she, yeah, I was not briefed on this one.
Oh, so I think we can do it, then if we can't do it, you can bring your resolution back together.
Very good.
Because that's what surprised me, too, so. Okay, what we can do then, is there anybody else who'd like to test, say anything, even though it's not a public hearing? David, go ahead. You're just supposed to run that thing over there, but you can come over. We're going to make you sign and state your name, Dave.
Sorry. No problem. Would you like me to go back to my seat, or you prefer I stay here to field questions?
Do whatever you'd like to do, Fred.
This will be real quick.
More questions for you, though.
Uh, Dave Adams, KLYC Radio Station Manager. One of the things that we've noticed is we're continuing to livestream video, in fact, people are watching us right now. We're noticing that some of the meetings are, we're noticing an overall increased number of people watching. Uh, one of the things that we're wanting to do is take this kind of to the next level in some instances, where we're talking about an issue that involves the community and involves a lot of variables, smell, waste, rate, so on and so forth, to have a moderated town hall where people could interject discussion, they can see a presentation, uh, we could moderate controlled input, it wouldn't be broadcast on the radio, so we wouldn't have to worry about somebody, you know, saying something inappropriate where we'd be fined, since it's on the internet, it's, you know, that's not a problem. But on issues like this, where there needs to be a real, good dialogue with the community to give you guys some input from a broader spectrum, and also give an opportunity for education, turning kind of a, this into a public town hall meeting online with moderated discussion might be something to investigate.
I like your, I like your idea, David, I think we can investigate that future. My concern, I don't know if the city attorney would do that, because if we have a town hall where we have a quorum of the councils here, then it becomes a public meeting and it has to be noticed and mod, even though it's a town hall, it's still a public meeting, it has to be noticed and, to the public, it has to be, we follow all of public meeting laws, and, I'm not saying that's necessarily bad.
That's not, that would in fact be good, because you would promote it and more people will get involved.
Yeah.
Because what you want is, you want community engagement and involvement in the process.
Yeah, and I think this is one that Fred can get on, if we approve this, just like we've had our own staff with Michael and Mike visit do with the transportation programs and the town halls, we've done with the parks and everything, I think this is an ideal time to do one of those educational outreach type things and do the presentation, just like, much like what you did on the, uh, transfer station, and do that same thing, so.
Yeah, I, I am really open to the council's direction on this one. This definitely doesn't happen, you know, abruptly and, and surprise the, by surprising our customers. That's part of the reason why we've set a timeline to October, to really, to really lay it out and get the word out, have, uh, mailers going out, we'll have, associated with the regular billing cycles, there would be independent mailers and leaflets going out, would be a lot of planning and logistics going through this, a lot of communication with staff. It, this, this would be a, a big, big step forward towards, you know, reducing our wastes.
I have one other question for you, Fred, just, and you may not know these numbers, just for me personally. This type of a service, if, if the council moves to approve option B, this, this type of a service, if I look at the rate structure, how do we, how does it compare with others in the state or in the Northwest? Is it, is it about the same? Is it less? Is it more? I mean.
Yeah, generally speaking, it's about the same. Uh, you can find higher, you can find lower. So what's difficult, oh, absolutely, I mean, that's, that's a big margin, 10% is a big margin. The, it, where it becomes difficult is when you're actually indeed finding an apple to an apple, because every city has a different prescription essentially of services that are available, so here, we have the drive-in drop-off option, right? That, that is a very unique service that is not offered in other communities, Newburgh, for example, or Lincoln City, or Dallas, but nobody has that option. They have unique services that we don't, and generally, as, as Mark was saying, is the anchor to the rates is generally, very, very few exceptions, is based around the garbage collection. That is, that is the one consistent denominator that historically has always been used as an anchor. You know, San Francisco, for instance, needs to explore the options that they're talking about, reaching an 82% diversion rate. That's when you have to start looking at alternatives, so they're looking at charging, recycle, and garbage.
Okay, I think we've had everything, Fred, except Scott.
Just a couple of questions, Fred. Looking at option B, curbside glass, would that be a monthly service, or is that a weekly service?
Honestly, I'm going to have to get back to you.
And then yard debris, if, if we're co-mingling yard debris with food debris, would that be a 90 gallon weekly?
Bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly, okay, and then we would have bi-weekly of recyclables.
Correct.
And then you'd have the option of bi-weekly or weekly or monthly on garbage.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Um, well, you know, I think based on everything I've heard tonight and, and based on our goals and what we're trying to do, and personally, some other issues that the city has dealt with and gone on, right, for, I would entertain a motion then that we would approve option B of Recology Waste Collection.
Second.
So moved, I figured you would, so moved by Council Drabkin, second, by Councilor Makie, all those favors signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, let it show it pass. Unanimately, those members present with, with Councillors Rudin, Councillors Yoder absent, and I think the next thing we'll do, since it's, it's passed, Fred, we'll probably have you start working on putting together what you feel is a good plan, and make sure that between Martha and this, and the council, you keep the council informed on how you're, how you're doing on all this, so.
All right, I'm, I'm excited to start this project. I, I will say that should, should anything change, if you find that there is, you know, a different sentiment than what's expressed here today, Recology Western Oregon is, is always going to work with the city and the council and staff, so if, if a pivot needs to take place of a shift, just call us. We'll, we'll be working forward on option B to get up and running in October. And thank you, that's, that's really exciting.
It definitely meets our goals and goes along with some of our goals.
Yeah, it's going to be a huge, it's, it's a game changer.
Okay, thanks for your comments, Mark. Let's go on then, continue on, we do have, to continue our presentations, we have a couple more presentations, and the next presentation is for the Hill Road Transportation Bond Project, and Michael, I think you're going to handle that one?
Thank you, Mayor, I'll get it started, and then I'll hand off the presentation to our consulting team who's here this evening. Uh, the Hill Road project is the largest corridor project that was contained in the city's 2014 transportation bond measure. It involves improving Hill Road from Second Street to Baker Creek Road. We've had a couple of open houses already regarding the project that were quite well-attended, one in March that we had over 130 people sign in, and one just last week where we had over 70 folks sign in. The response was overwhelmingly positive regarding the project at both those open houses. In fact, perhaps you might hear from the consulting team that I'll introduce in a bit, that they're not used to having that many people in a room regarding a project and not having the tone of the crowd being upset and worried about the project, so. With that, I would like to introduce CH2M. We're, we're pleased and, and happy to have CH2M Hill on the project. We have a longstanding positive relationship with CH2M, and in fact, those of you that have been around a while, I'll, I'll be introducing Dave Simmons in a minute. You might recall that in the late 90s, when we improved Lafayette Avenue, and when he and I were both a bit younger, Dave was the lead engineer for CH2M on that project, so we're pleased to have them working with us on this project, and they've done some great work so far. So without further ado, I'll have CH2M, both Dave Simmons and Darren Hippensteele come forward, they have a brief presentation for you regarding the project. I'll have Rose sort of cue that computer at the testimony table, and then I'll also note that the city's project manager, Larry Sherwood, is here this evening and has been instrumental in moving this project forward and meeting with the property owners. I think we'll probably have to scape out of that, Dave, and then yours is queued up as a PowerPoint at the bottom. There you go. So, Dave and Darren.
Welcome, gentlemen.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Counselor. I'm Dave Simmons, in case you can't tell, who might be the older one here. And this is Darren Hippensteele. I'm the project manager with CH2M Hill, leading this effort. Darren is the, leading the, the engineering team that is, as the design manager. So we're pleased, as Mike indicated, to be a part of this project, working with the city in delivering what is for us a real fun and a nice opportunity to be involved in a project that, like this, which has such high value in terms of improving quality of life within the community. As Mike said, this is a, a project that has been recognized in the city's TSP and is one of five projects in the, in the GoBond program that was approved in 2014. The need for the project is identified here in this, this slide, identifying several of the key problem areas with sharp curves along the road, narrow shoulders, lack of sidewalks, steep grade up near Cemetery Road, up in the middle of the project with, there with, where the pickup truck is shown in the lower right there, where it's difficult to see up over that crest. And then this lower left photo was from the, some of the flooding that we had this, this spring and last fall, actually along the northern portion of the project, so there's certainly a number of issues here that need to be addressed, and the project team is, is going to, is working on, you know, solving that as part of this project. So, we're going to talk through a couple of alternatives that the project team developed, and, and the primary differences in those alternatives is, is how we address these three intersections within the corridor, the, at the south end, the Hill Road and Second Street intersection, Wallace Road, Hill Road intersection, and then at the north end, at Baker Creek Road. We gathered traffic data earlier in the year and conducted a traffic study, and, and, looked at these intersections over the next 20-year horizon, using the city's travel demand model, and from that, we use that to assess what type of solutions are appropriate for, for these key intersections that have the higher traffic volumes within the corridor. This is the typical roadway cross-section that the project team is using for developing the design. It features, in essence, one travel lane in each direction like you have today, but with the addition of a center turn lane where left turn lanes are needed, where left turn lanes are not needed, there's an option to provide a landscape, landscaping in that median space. We'll be adding bicycle lanes on each side of the roadway, and, and where possible, including a landscape planter strip, and then to provide that separation for the sidewalk on either side of the facility. And we'll talk about, I'll talk about a little bit about where, how, and where we might deviate from this as we get a little farther on in the presentation. So, as I said, the project team developed a couple of alternatives, and we, we brought two alternatives to the March open house that we held, that, as Mike said, was very well-attended. And, and so, this is a photo of the southern kind of half of the, of the corridor, the, Hill Road location, Second Street, excuse me, is right there, and then Fox Ridge Road is right there in, in the corridor, and so north is, is to the, is that direction to the right, and I've got a second slide here that shows that. So this is alternative one, which proposed keeping what we call stop-controlled intersections, which is what's out there today at the Second Street intersection. This next view of alternative one shows the kind of northern half of the corridor, where Wallace Road would also maintain stop, stops, side street controlled like it does today, and then at the north end, where Hill Road intersects Baker Creek, we would also have stop, stop signs there like there is today. Now, we received several questions, and I know in the, in the prospectus for the project, there was a discussion about traffic signals versus roundabouts. In our traffic analysis, the signals at, at this location, at these three key intersections over the 20-year horizon are not warranted. Certainly, what we do in, they are, at Baker Creek and at Second Street, near the end of the 20-year horizon, they do, the congestion increases to a level where they would be warranted, but typically, you wouldn't install a signal unless it's needed within the first three to five-year periods after construction, so that's why we're continuing to call these kind of stop-controlled for this alternative. Alternative two looks at roundabouts at these three key intersections, so this is a view, same view of, of the southern half of the corridor. Apologize, the graphics are not quite as bright as the other earlier alternative, but this is the Second Street intersection, again, where we developed a footprint for a roundabout at this location. Moving to the next slide, Wallace is shown there in the lower, lower-left corner, and then at Baker Creek, there's a roundabout proposed at that location. So the project team, we talked about this at the open sec, the first open house, about the, the benefits of, of roundabouts in terms of improved capa, can, traffic capacity, improved safety performance generally over traditional kind of stop-controlled intersections. So, following the, the receipt of, of the feedback from that first open house, the project team went away and conducted an evaluation of the corridor, of the two alternatives, and out of that, the recommendation from the project team was to develop a hybrid, and, and how we came about that was by looking at the evaluation criteria that we developed, we, as, as part of that, we developed construction costs, and, and the budget for this project, which we've been clear in our communication with the community is, is has, we do have a limited budget for it, and as a result of looking at that budget, we're concerned about, while the alternative that had, alternative two that has all, all three roundabouts at those locations did score the best, we also have a limitation from a budget standpoint, we were concerned about our ability to, that the, that you could actually afford to build three roundabouts. They are more expensive to build than these, the stop-controlled intersections.
And, and, and Dave, are we looking at roundabouts being about $400,000 to $500,000 in cost per roundabout?
I'd say that's a pretty close, Darren, yeah?
Yeah, I'd say for a single lane roundabout, which was proposed at each of the three study intersections that we looked at, the, the Second Street would probably be a little bit less than that because it's a mini roundabout. We don't have the same footprint impacts that we laid out that we have at Wallace and Baker Creek Road, and, and that was really a decision to try to avoid as much ride-away impacts as we, as we could at that intersection. So that's ballpark, I guess, to answer your question.
Okay.
So this alternative three represents a hybrid in that, at the, at the Second Street intersection, we are recommending that we provide a stop, the stop-controlled intersection there, and, and roundabouts at the other two intersections, at Wallace and at Baker Creek. And we feel that that strikes a balance in terms of being able to meet the, the project safety goals, and also the budget goals that the project has. And as I said, we presented this to, this recommendation to the community. And as I said, we presented this to, this recommendation to the community last, at the second open house, I should say. And how we came to that conclusion was by looking at the performance of that, you know, I think we've, let me step back for a second. We received questions about, well, why did you, why did you decide to eliminate the roundabout at Second Street versus the other two intersections? And as Darren indicated, that, the location at that intersection is more constrained. There's less right-of-way there. We'd create more impact if we tried to construct the, a larger roundabout like we've done at the, like we've shown at the other two locations. And so, as a result, the kind of the safety benefits that we achieve from the roundabout, from those mini roundabouts are not quite as good as we, as we would like to. The difference between a stop-controlled intersection and this, and a roundabout, is there's less difference with this particular smaller footprint that we have to work with. So, we felt like we're providing a good kind of a balance point there with budget and performance.
What kind of traffic signal or stop are you considering for the Second and Hill? Just a standard stop sign we have now?
Just a standard stop sign, that's right, yes. With left turn lanes, I believe, on the...
Yeah, so the cross-section of Hill Road would be improved. Right now, it's, it's the, call it a rural cross-section with lanes, narrow shoulders and ditches. So, we would upgrade it to the standard urban cross-section for the city. Second Street would stay in its configuration now, so we wouldn't have to remove the island that's there in the west or eastbound direction that turns south on Hill Road. So, the footprint on Second Street wouldn't change much at all, but Second, excuse me, Hill Road would be improved.
Isn't that the one, the Second and Hill, isn't, isn't that intersection busier than the other intersections though? Or is it?
Yeah, I don't remember the volumes at each of the study intersections off the top of my head. I think anecdotally, I've heard that it, from citizens, that it is busier. And looking at the traffic analysis that we did, only Second Street and Baker Creek met the thresholds for, for signals at the 20-year horizon. Wallace didn't. So, you could say that Second Street is busier than Wallace. Even still, it doesn't meet the thresholds for the signal until that later date.
Sure. No, and my question still is kind of based in the, about the roundabout and the kind of relief that that, that that would bring and the safety considerations and the additional And so, that's why I was asking. It would seem to me like that would be the one that you would want to keep more so than the one at Wallace. But I understand it's not just a, I understand it has a lot to do with the public right-of-way.
That's right, yeah. The space.
I'm sorry, Dave. I think there's sort of layers of complexity within, within the question. I think one of the benefits for, kind of one of the unspoken benefits for a roundabout at Wallace is that it breaks up the length of the corridor. When we improve this corridor to urban standards, it becomes a very long uninterrupted corridor. And there are quite a few of the neighbors that are worried about the speed of traveling vehicles within the corridor. The ability to have the roundabout sort of midpoint in the corridor does create some traffic calming and does break up the corridor a bit, as well as the ability to place a landscape median where we don't need left turn lanes. So, we're, we're trying to balance the safety along the entire corridor as well as at the key intersections. So, one of the challenges with the Second Street intersection is just the footprint. And so, we aren't able to put a full-size roundabout like we are at the other two locations without significantly impacting private property. The interesting thing about the proposed improvements is our TSP anticipates that the south portion of Hill Road, south of Second Street, will eventually be improved to urban standards. And so, as we move forward as a community and the traffic in the area increases, we do have the ability to look at a traffic signal at Second Street or perhaps as part of the southern corridor, we decide that it's worth buying up private property to install a full-size roundabout and increase the safety at that location. So, nothing we're proposing with this solution precludes us from doing that in the future.
Thank you very much.
Oh, that's, that's great. He took the words right out of my mouth. So, so as a result of that, you know, I mentioned the overall concern for keeping the project within budget. And so, this is some of the things that we've talked about in the corridor that this section represents some of the things that we've been talking about as a project team to try to reduce the budget and try to ensure that we stick within the funds that are available. This shows the cross-section of the roadway in an area between the Fox Ridge Road and the very north, north end of the project at Baker Creek, where along the westerly side there were the, where it's the rural side of the street, we're proposing that we would not provide a sidewalk on that side of the street largely because there isn't, we can provide the pedestrian connectivity as such by putting it on the side where the homes are. And then there's, there's a cost savings as a result of that. So, south of Fox Ridge, we would then, there would be a sidewalk on both sides because it matches with the land use in that location where there are houses on both sides.
I have a question. If you can go back to the other map showing the two turns, next one. This area up here on the top of that peak, is it necessary? Am I looking at that? Maybe it's this one right here, that's the one.
That's...
Is it necessary to have that open there? Because that's right at the peak of that, that hill.
It, it...
I see most close calls is right at the top of that.
Right. It's, it's closed today.
There's a barrier on the, on the west side or the upper side, but both the church and the retirement community, they tend to use that more than I think they should. And it seems really dangerous. They pull out there and they're kind of hoping that no one, no one hits you as you're entering because you can't see the bottom of the hill. You don't see what's coming.
Sure. So, part of the project will be to improve the vertical curve on the roadway in that location because right now it doesn't meet any standard at all. I think the profile grade on the, on the north side of the slope is greater than 10% as you come off the top of the hill. So, we would, we would essentially flatten that out and improve the site distance for all directions, not just for the users trying to come in and out of the hilltop community and the church, but also for vehicles traveling on the roadway. So, there'd be a lot better site distance for making decisions when to pull out. And also have the left turn lane there for vehicles to be able to pull off, to pick those gaps when they can pull into, into the properties. We would not be proposing to open Cemetery Road as part of the project, it would stay closed.
Okay. And then facetiously, is there going to be a wildlife crossing there? There's a lot of deer in that...
We need that the whole length, the whole length of Second, whole length of the whole...
Heard anything about wildlife crossings yet?
I want one in front of my house.
They, the deer nest in...
Everything.
This area here and right in here, it's just deer constantly.
Well, see, we're going to put that in the middle of the road so they can...
Oh, okay. I hear about it all the time, so.
On the Second, on the Second and Hill Road, to maintain a controlled intersection, non-signalized intersection like it's proposed now, with the left-hand turn lanes, my, I guess my only concern is I've been out there and I live in that area, area. And are the transportation studies, are they done on what the current traffic is or what the anticipated traffic's going to be?
They do focus on that 20-year horizon and the growth in traffic.
Because I know there's times now going north, especially going north on Hill Road, where I'm backed up nine cars, 10 cars, 11 cars coming up to that Second and Hill Road intersection. Doesn't happen all the time, but it seems like there's...
Peak hours, probably.
Well, it's not necessarily, sometimes it's 2:00 in the afternoon. And I think part of it is because that little market complex there gets so much business of people pulling in and out of there. I mean, they're busy all the time. And I'm wondering, you know, if, if we're five years into that 20-year planning cycle or whatever, before we figure we're going to need that, or as like Mike said, when we improve the south end of Hill Road, when that becomes to urban standards, and I'm not, I don't know the cost of the signalized intersection, but if that isn't something that, you know, are we going to find out is after Hill Road's improved and the way it changes traffic, in two years, are we going to find out that that intersection is bad enough that we need to signal? Signalize?
Well, you've got a lot of doctors, dentists, that's, that's a concentrated area.
That's a very busy, busy intersection.
And then with those, those new apartments that are sitting back over on the west side off of, south of...
And that's my only, that's my only concern about Second and Hill Road. Now, whether it justifies a signal, I'm not, definitely not for a roundabout at that intersection. But whether that justifies a signal at that intersection, I just don't think a stop intersection, but I don't know. I haven't done the, done the traffic studies. Of course, it's not my job, but as I know is what's on that, the four, three corners of that intersection and the additional commercial property that's right there, that I think that's an awful busy, busy intersection to just have a controlled stop with. I mean, that's just me. And Mike, I'm sure you've had a lot of input into that.
Yeah, in fact, the traffic model that Dave referenced is based on complete development of all the properties within the urban growth boundary. And the initial warrant analysis is based on actual traffic data that was gathered currently. And so, we're not only looking on, at today's situation, we're also then projecting into the future to determine, you know, was a signal going to be needed within the short-term planning period? And it wasn't. And so, it would be pretty difficult to install a signal now when it wasn't warranted and, you know, get concurrence with our partners at the state that maintain our signals for us and things like that. Again, nothing we're doing precludes us from, if there is a significant change, adding that signal in the future. In fact, there are some conditions of approval for some of the residential lands to the west that as they develop, if a signal is needed, they need to install it at that intersection. So, there are some protections already in place within land use approvals and in, within our TSP that will address the traffic at that intersection as it continues to grow.
Okay, is there, let me ask one more question. Is there any plans on, even though it could be five years, 10 years before we put a signal in there, to overturn that, to put some of the infrastructure in to support that signal? So, in five years or if we determine we're needing one, we're not going back in and tearing everything up to put the signals back in?
Well, again, you wouldn't want to put too much infrastructure such as foundations in place because structural rules could change between now and then. And, you know, things like conduits can be bored these days. The sort of intrusive tear things up is a little bit less of an issue with a traffic signal where you're boring signal foundations and also boring conduits across to provide connections. And even these days, detection of vehicles at traffic signals is done by video, not necessarily by loops in the ground. And so, again, I don't think anything we're doing with this project will necessarily be throwaway or preclude an improvement at a later date.
Okay. And then my only other question was on Hill Road and, Hill Road and Baker Creek. My big concern is that is, you know, that's a pretty, coming up off the bridge from the west to the east to come up to that traffic signal, that's a pretty dangerous curve. And once you come up around that curve, you don't have a lot of room to slow down before you ride on top of that traffic, that roundabout. And so, what is being done along west of Hill Road to mitigate that issue about where the Draper's Farm is? Because cars come around that corner all the time doing 50 miles an hour. And I'll tell you, they're not going to stop by the time they get to that roundabout, to be going around that roundabout safely. So, what kind of mitigation things we're looking at or can be done to mitigate the safety standard of that roundabout?
Well, first thing that we would want to look at is, is the curvature of that curve, you know, what kind of design speed it would accommodate to the design standards that we, that we're working towards. And whether a vehicle could, you know, if it was coming around, around the corner at the posted speed, could they stop safely at the intersection or slow down to get into the roundabout? What we've laid out so far shows that a vehicle could slow down coming out of the curve into the roundabout because a roundabout's not a stop-controlled condition. And you could, you could stop in a yield condition, but roundabouts are designed for about 20 miles an hour through the circulatory roadway. So, as a vehicle comes around that corner, they don't necessarily have to stop to, slow down to stop condition. And we have enough space between the curve and the roundabout to allow vehicles to slow, safely slow down. But what we are doing is collecting some additional topal surveys part of our, as part of our work efforts to see, you know, if we do need to extend our improvements further west out of the intersection and soften that curve so that it is to a better design standard if our improvements push that far, that we have the data to do that.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I had.
So, I mentioned the, some of the cross-section modifications that we'll be looking at as we move forward into the design phase to, and will, as we assess budget and so, looking at things like eliminating sidewalk and things like that in areas where it doesn't, the functional need isn't, isn't there. So, at this point, I wanted to just flash, this is the evaluation matrix. And I recognize that the print is a little small there, so this is not meant to be an eye test, but if you can focus on the colors, perhaps this is, this is the tool that, that the project team used to consider a variety of criteria, including safety, natural resource impacts, and the ability to safe, implement this from a construction standpoint, from a cost standpoint. And then the last criteria that we had was, does it, how does it meet the traffic needs? And we use a qualitative kind of a scoring with kind of a good, better, best. And green represents the best, kind of the upper end, and that kind of brownish color is the, is the lower end of the spectrum in terms of a score. So, as I mentioned, that when we went through the evaluation, roundabouts generally are from a safety criteria score the best. They do take up a larger footprint. So, there were, as you'll see in a couple of the criteria, right-of-way needs are slightly, are slightly higher. They are, they more and more difficult to construct. So, they, in the construction, constructability is what that capable, what that represents is how easy are they construct in terms of keeping traffic moving? They're a little more difficult that way. But in terms of traffic performance, these, the roundabout will have a much longer lifespan beyond even the 20-year horizon that we looked at. Whereas, as, as has been discussed, the Second Street intersection will in fact need some sort of additional work within the 20-year, near the end of the 20-year horizon. But the roundabout should be good well beyond that in terms of their capacity, that inability to handle traffic in their current form.
One last, sorry, just occurred to me, the, the roundabout proposed for Hill and Baker, what would its capacity be, usability for large farm equipment?
Yeah, that's a good question. So, one of the things that we do with each of these projects is look at what type of vehicles are going to be using them. And Larry Sherwood, the city's project manager, has been reaching out to the community, talking with farmers, local users, that sort of thing. And we've, we have a history of doing these kinds of projects in these rural areas where log trucks, there's lowboys, farmer implements. And so, we size the roundabout and Darren and his team, they actually determine what type of vehicles and they have, they run models through the, through the roundabout. And so, that's how it's structured.
Actually, I know from Baker Creek, from west, east on Baker Creek, the Hill Road, then south on Hill Road to Peavine, there's a lot of farm implements that use that because there's no other way to get around. And I mean, there's, especially during harvest season now, there's a lot of big farm implements that use.
Sure.
What's the corresponding budgets to the alternatives one, two, and three? Do they go, do they, they gain in price or do they, do they correlate to their overall score?
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember what the exact price. We did conceptual level cost estimates as part of our alternatives analysis, and I don't recall the exact dollar amounts for each one of them. But the, the colors, squares represent the most expensive option and the lowest expensive option. So, the roundabouts, with the, with the three roundabouts was, was the highest option.
So...
Thinking to put all them together then is alternative one that scored a six, the least expensive option?
It is.
Alternative three that scored seven, the second and nine?
That's correct, yeah. The, the general range of these numbers was between eight to, 8 million to about 8.6, 8.7 million was kind of the range in overall cost between alternative one and alternative two. So, it wasn't a dramatic... So it wasn't a dramatic difference in terms of cost, but it takes us over that, slightly over the, where the desired budget is for the project if we went with all three roundabouts. So this last, this, I think this is the last slide here where we outlined where we're headed in terms of project schedule. We are in the process of, we entering into the preliminary design phase and actually will be completing what we call the 30% design milestone in about another month on the project. And, and then from there, we, we have entered the final design phase, which takes us from 30% to 100% completion. And we'll have intermediate milestones where we'll be submitting the plans to the city for review at 60%, 90%, and, and then final plans. Right-of-way acquisition is anticipated to start this summer and the project's on target for bidding next year. And depending on phasing and the staging, whether we can get done in one construction season, it's likely that it will slip over into a second season just to allow for appropriate time for construction and, while maintaining traffic flow. Because that is a challenge with the roundabouts in particular. At Baker Creek, we may need to do that in, in halves, which takes a little longer in order to keep traffic flowing because there isn't a good alternate route at that particular location.
Any questions from anybody? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Mike, good, good job.
Absolutely.
And I think with Sherwood on, we have a good project manager on it and you guys, great, great job.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I was going to add in there, Larry Sherwood, the, the project manager, brought some of these flyers we had left over from the public meeting and they're just general information flyers for a roundabout, so I was going to leave them at the back table or give some for you guys as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, thank you.
Okay, that'll take us to our last presentation and we'll have Scott Fessler come up, who actually is going to do a presentation on the Police Department Investigation Team.
Mr. Mayor, Council, I know it's been a very, very long evening, but this is one of the, an important presentation. I think it kind of goes and will kind of paint a picture of what's going on in the city, what's going on in the investigation section, which obviously trickles into the Patrol Division. Scott's worked hard at this presentation and as you recall from my January presentations and previous presentations, the detective sections seen an unprecedented jump in the criminal investigations that they handled. And that because of this massive workload, in April this year, we resigned an officer from the Patrol Section to the Investigation Section. Scott's presentation's going to cover the types of crimes that they're investigating, why the cases continue to rise, the rates at which they've risen. And also going to probably tackle and probably open your eyes to some difficult situations at the Police Department and more importantly, the victims of crimes are being put in as their cases cannot be investigated in a timely or as an efficient manner. So with that being said, I'd like to introduce Scott Fessler. He's been a detective sergeant for a number of years and with the PD for 15-plus years probably. So with that, I'll hand it over to Scott.
Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. My name is Scott Fessler, I've been with the police department for over 15 years. I've been detective sergeant for two and a half. I guess I'll throw this out to you. I've never been to a city council meeting that's gone this long, so I don't know how long you guys are used to.
Whatever it takes, we're getting used to these long ones.
Well, then I agree with the mayor.
Whatever it takes, we've got five minutes now. Whatever it takes.
My team and I are used to, we've pushed through longer days. And so basically what I'm offering up is the opportunity to, there is extremely important information in this presentation and I'm willing to, I guess, offer it up to you. If you want to push through, I'll push through. I'll do it as fast as I can. But there is some statistical stuff in here that goes towards what I feel is an extreme crisis right now in the, in the detective section, staffing and caseloads. And in March, one of the city council meetings, Councilman Jeffries had, mentioned that it is the council's desire to hear non-sugar-coated information. And this presentation, in my opinion, is about as sugar-free as you can get. There is no silver lining to what this information is, in my opinion. In April, there was a sort of an analogy made between public safety staffing in the city and that maybe it's a, you know, a vehicle that's maybe got a squeaky wheel that's maybe pulling to the left or the right and we got to start talking about how are we going to get it straightened out. The analogy I would give you right off the bat, and you haven't even seen the presentation yet, is that the detective section is a vehicle that the wheels have come off right now. And so I'm willing to push through this. It's late at night. I, there's, I brought copies of this PowerPoint presentation to leave with each one of you so you could review it. And so if you're game, I'm game. You've been hearing a lot of information tonight and it's late. And I didn't time this, but you're probably looking at 40, 45 minutes.
I'll leave it up to the council. You know, I think this is important. If I don't want to know if we want to push or have Martha schedule a presentation, this is the only presentation we have. So if it takes an hour, hour and 15 minutes, we can, I hate to not have Scott with everybody that attends tonight, not do it, but yet it's such a critical issue, I'd rather make sure we're all sharp and.
Would you want to do it at your dinner meeting in two weeks? I'd give up my training slot for that.
But if it's an hour and a half.
An hour and a half.
Hour and a half, yeah.
The, the thought I had is, is maybe be able to pick up on the, the CD and preview it so that we could be a little more prepared and then have it at our next meeting.
Is the CD such that it's fairly self-explanatory that we would learn something?
Yeah, it's like any PowerPoint, you know, it's hard to put all words on a slide. And so it's a skeleton and then.
But I mean, have the, have the presentation, but give us an opportunity to look at the, the charts and some of the information.
Yeah, I'm not even so sure, Scott, I, I mean, length of that and all the information we've heard, if, if, you know, it's going to take a minimum of 45 minutes to push through, I'm not even so sure we can dedicate, I mean, we can, in all honesty and all fairness, I mean, I'm leaving it up to council, but if we feel comfortable going through this and being able to absorb everything we, everything we have, I'm going to leave it up to the, I'm going to leave it up to the council, but some of us are retired, some of us given, I'm sorry.
I have to drive to Pendleton in the morning, so I'm kind of erring on the side of not doing it tonight.
I'm, I'm respectful of that as well and that's why I'm offering it up. I'm not opposed to providing you with the, I didn't mean to interrupt you there, but I'm not, I'm not opposed to providing you.
I guess my, my brothers would, is if we can get a download posted to our website or sent to us via email, the PowerPoint, so we can just look, look at.
He's got it, right.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is if, if he doesn't have one.
You don't have a disk drive?
Well, not here, but at home.
Yeah, but what, but that's what I'm saying. And then what we can do is he can come back, Scott can come back and do the presentation.
That's what I'm saying, is, is take it home, let's absorb some of it.
Because we can make available, yeah, we can make it available.
Could we make it a work session at the beginning of next time?
Yeah, well, actually, we could, if, so if you don't push through it, Scott, you're talking hour and a half.
How happy is the agenda at the next meeting?
I believe it's, you have a county meeting next week.
Oh, county, it's the county, so it'll be the first, no, not week?
No, I.
That's in July, isn't it? That's in July, I believe. So what I'd rather, so if, an hour and a half, you think would get you through everything?
No, I, I'm not sure where the hour and a half came from. I said that, I'm talking 40, 45 minutes to push through it right now.
So we could do it at our dinner meeting.
You could do it at the dinner meeting next week if you start right at six.
Yeah, why don't we do this? I think I'd be comfortable dedicating our, if we can get started at six o'clock or no, 10 after six and, and turn it over to Scott, that we do it as a presentation at our dinner meeting and then make sure this is made available online for others. Because I, I'm, I want, if, since we're not sugar-coating and I want to see the facts, I want to have some time to really understand what those facts say.
Well, it's really, the, the facts are, it's, you're not going to have to think a whole lot, it's just some numbers, some comparator numbers. And I think what Detective Fessler's saying is that the presentation itself, 40 minutes, you know, as we go through this. And the, the CD will provide you a little bit of, a little longer time to take a look at the, at the information. I don't think, I would envision this going an hour and a half. I don't, the, the number hour and a half came out, but I, I'm just, I'm throwing it out there.
And I sprung.
You're throwing out an hour and a half for everything?
No, 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 no.
45 minutes for everything.
Correct. The presentation's 40 to 45 and Scott will probably.
My thing, if it's like anything else, just like tonight, we're probably going to, once we start looking at it, have a lot of questions and that's going to add quite a significant amount of time. So, but I'm all for at least starting it at a dinner, doing it during our dinner meeting. Matt, does that work with you? And Scott, does that work with you if we do it at our dinner meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I apologize to my chief because this was, I mean, he had every intent to continue on and so do I if, if, if we weren't at this point in the night. And I recognize that and so.
We appreciate.
Me offering this up caught him off and I apologize.
Oh, that's fine.
So, yeah, we're probably 40, 45 minutes. The only thing, if, if I could just make a brief comment and then we can move along is that the reason it's so important to me and, and again, I'm very respectful of your time and be willing to postpone it is this, this process, this evaluation process, like I said, I've been detective sergeant for about two and a half years, started in January of 2014. At that point, that is when we saw the start of some just unbelievable increases in caseloads and combined with reduced staffing or inadequate staffing, unfortunately, is, has put us in a position right now, two to two and a half years later, that I'm not sure where we're going to go in the next six months. I don't know what the detective section volume and, and work and how we are going to accomplish what needs to get done. That, that's what I want to share with you. This started back in October, November, talking with the chief and, and basically I, for me personally, being the supervisor, I, I looked at it like I have to do everything within my power to push this message forward. I've been pushing this message internally for almost two years and, and we've been brainstorming, trying to come up with a solution. And so I have to be able to say at some point that I've done everything within my power. And so I, that's why I'm here. That's why I'm willing to do the presentation. And so unfortunately, we were initially scheduled for March-ish, which would have landed in the budget process, but things get moved. It's not the only city business, I totally recognize that. And so we've been bumped a couple times. But I want to be respectful of your time and, and, and want to be able to provide you with an intelligent presentation that you can then absorb and provide back.
Yeah, and I want to make sure the council can cons, that's why I'm looking at the dinner because I want to make sure we can concentrate on what you're, what you're providing us to. So they're checking on a date on, we'll see what.
When I make those analogies, they're, it's, it, it's basically to say there, there are some serious concerns and we've got to do.
Well, and we appreciate that, that's what we want to hear and we want to be able to.
Appreciate it, and we really do want to hear you. I'm, I'm so sorry it's so late.
No, I totally, I understand. Sometimes things just go wrong.
Okay.
You got the kids on the block, are going to speak at the dinner session?
Let's move, we can move that. Jay, I don't think Janet will mind moving that one out.
You're good.
Let's move that one, just tell Jay and Jack that we're going to move that because this, this is really more, I mean, the kids on the block is still functioning, whereas this is much more important to us, I think.
Yeah, and if we could do the session in here and just have box lunches or whatever.
So we can see the PowerPoint and everything.
So we can see the PowerPoint and the people from the public can attend it, they'll be more comfortable than if we're trying to do it in the other room.
Yeah, because that way we can actually schedule it as a work session and instead of dinner meeting, that way, six o'clock and that way, the public, it'll be noticed. And since our dinner meetings are public anyway, we might have a lot of, some of the public that want to come and listen to that. And I think that's a much better venue to do it. So six o'clock on the, what day would that be, Rose?
June 28.
June 28, six o'clock, Scott, does that sound good with you?
I'll make that work, yeah.
Good. And then we'll have some more of the public here, I like that, so.
Our apologies to the men and women in the back.
Guys, we don't realize you didn't have anything more to do tonight.
Why did you do this whole meeting?
Well, I do, I do just want to take a minute, this is my team.
Wow, what a good looking team.
Yeah, I think it's important to recognize Sam Elliott's back there, Hugo Surt is back there, Brian McMullin, Justin James, Bill Christensen, both captains are back there and they came here to, to listen to the presentation and provide support. So I just wanted to recognize them, they've been here a long time too.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You won't, you won't find a better group of guys. What you'll see, I'm sorry, it's very emotional for me. The work that you're going to see that's been accomplished and that is unfortunately not getting accomplished is carried on their shoulders. And the last two years, that's what I'm here to convey.
Yeah.
It's difficult and it's not a position that I, that I really thought that we would be in. And so I've been at a couple of meetings where you talk about needing to have the tough discussions going forward and, and this is going to have to be one of them. There, we, we deal with the worst of the worst cases, the detective section. I'm just going to leave it at that because there's a lot of information here, but, but you will not find a better team.
Well, like Scott, it's very important because it's not only important to me as the mayor, to us as the city council and to our citizens, it's very important to us too that we make sure that we give the staff, like the detective staff or the patrol staff, whatever staff it is, that we give the staff the tools to make sure that they're in a position to put our citizens in better hands. So we're just as concerned with the staff and with your team and our team as we are with citizens. Because we realize that they can't, we can't do justice to our citizens if we're not giving the staff the tools and everything to do the job.
Well, I appreciate that, I really do. That, that means a lot to me and I, and I know it means a lot to them, so thank you. I'm, I'm sorry to get sidetracked there and I'm sorry for the kind of the emotions, but it's, it's very.
Understandable.
And if, if you let us know who's going to come back, everyone will make sure that they have, they have boxed dinners also.
Give us the list of the people that are attending.
Appreciate that, too.
They have that too.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you.
So Rose, you can coordinate that, make sure the staff, whatever, of the police BD is, staff is going to come for the, for the work session that they have, we have enough boxed dinners?
Just have it.
Yeah, and I'll leave these.
Yep.
If you, okay.
Yeah, we'll take them home.
Give them to Rose and she'll make sure we get them.
Thank you very much.
And Scott, I appreciate you being so passionate about your job and the 15 years you've put in and everything.
Thank you.
It definitely shows your passion for the job and your staff definitely shows.
Well, I try to keep up with my guys and that's, that's tough some days, so I appreciate your time.
You got it.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one other piece of business tonight and that is Doug's, and it's initiating a legislative zoning amendment affecting restrictions on marijuana within 1,000 feet of preschools. So Doug?
I have about a three-hour presentation.
Doug, that, you're, Doug, yours can be done about July.
No, I will.
I'll bring him back.
I'm sorry, I think we've already covered marijuana?
Yes.
Yeah, we've already covered that, Doug. Now, if we would have covered it a little bit better, he probably could have listened to Fessler's presentation.
I haven't seen you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll be very brief in my comments. I'll refer you to, if I could, to the memorandum that's in your packet. And in very brief summary, in our short course of history and working with the marijuana ordinances, we've encountered a bit of an issue dealing with one element in particular and that's the 1,000-foot buffer that we have from preschools. And that affects medical marijuana dispensaries and commercial recreational marijuana sales as well. I've provided for you a couple of reasons why it's adding to our complexity and our ability to enforce or, or lack of ability to enforce some provisions of that. It speaks to the lack of licensing program at the state as well as the various, various types of, types of preschools that are available through the state process. And also there's a little bit of an element of secrecy to the licensing, or I shouldn't say certification, of these types of facilities and how their information's released to us and our ability to then track them and determine where they're located in the city. All that is just to ask for your direction to allow staff to initiate a legislative amendment to the current ordinance specific to that buffer element. And if time permits this evening or you're so inclined, staff would appreciate your consensus or some direction as to the two options that we lay out in that ordinance. And one is to remove in its entirety the buffer from preschools and the other, the second option would be to go out and better define the type of preschool or childcare facility that you believe should be buffered from those types of activities, marijuana-related activities.
What, I guess, Doug, I'll ask you, if we look at the two options, I'll ask you and I'll ask David, to cut down the complexities in the future and to bring us more in compliance with what the state laws is regarding preschool, what's the best? Is it best to not, to go out and not try to figure out what, you know, what we want to define it as and just, just drop it out totally? What's the, what's the best?
Yeah, I think the, the preschool buffer is one that is unique to McMinnville's code. It is not something that is a state requirement. So neither OHA nor, nor OLCC and their licensing imposes a 1,000-foot restriction around preschools. So we're really out on our own there coming up with a definition. And as we looked into this issue, as Doug mentions in the memo, the state has a number of different classifications depending on what's going on with childcare centers, nursery schools, child play schools, child development centers. And, and there's a, you know, in the life, there's no. the, there's no licensing of those, there's a registration process for some of them, some of those records are not made available to us to be able to provide a map to applicants that are coming in and getting a lux, creating the potential for a gotcha situation if it arises later, that there was one there, or it's raised during the process, which is essentially what happened in this case. We had a, it came to our attention, as we had, I believe, approved a land use compatibility statement for an applicant, and then a concerned citizen came in and complained that there was preschool located within the 1,000-foot buffer. We had no record of it, turned out they hadn't gotten a conditional use permit, which was required from us, so we had no city record of it, and when we started looking in with the state, that's when we found this kind of conundrum of our, our ordinance not being well-defined to what qualified. Because it's an additional restriction beyond what state law currently requires, one option is to simply eliminate the restriction altogether, which brings us closer into conformity with what the state is regulating in that area. But if maintaining a buffer around that preschool-type activity is something that the council wanted to maintain, then we would want to initiate a process at the planning commission level where we figured out how to get our hands around it and define it in a way that applicants will be aware of where those things are and we're aware of where they are to enforce the boundaries.
To me, preschool locations, and I can think of three in here at McMinnville, that I know in the last year that have changed locations, and that's pretty common in preschool locations, and trying to just keep up without any kind of business license, any kind of compatibility, trying to keep up of all the properties that the preschools move in into and they move out of, whether they're in a house, whether they're in a commercial building, I could see that being very, very onerous in its own. I mean, that's just my thing. I'd like to have it, but I'm not so sure what it would take to get us there, and then once we're there, to maintain it.
I would tend to err on the side of going with what the state says at this point in time and just simply removing it.
Because the state may change, who knows?
Well, they could change easily, and if necessary, we can, at that point in time, do the work, but...
That's something to consider, because as of right now, other than this one conflict that we didn't know anything about, because they didn't get a permit with us, or a land use, whatever you would call it.
Yeah, conditional use. Conditionality, yeah.
Right, so they didn't do that, so there probably aren't going to be a lot of, of these preschools affected by any of the siting of the marijuana facilities. So once these are all in here, they're locked, let's say they're locked in, if one were to move in next to, next door to it...
Then they're ground for, because it's already there.
Yeah, so, I mean, I'm all for, for greater restrictions on these, as you well know, but I'm not sure...
Yeah, but when you think of it, we're talking preschoolers, I mean, the issue would be with their parents more than it would be with the preschoolers, so I don't know that it's really an issue.
No, and I, and I, I agree.
This one, I'd just rather, I mean, myself personally, even though I'd like to know where they are, and I'd like to know...
Do any difference if we get rid of it?
I don't think a restriction, as I say, because they're preschoolers, I don't think a restriction is going to make a big difference, and I think the process, onerous process of keeping up, and I can see these coming up a lot more, I can actually see these coming up a lot more, so...
Yeah, none of the preschools have an open campus.
Where they go out for lunch? Anyway, Remy, what's your thoughts? We're going to give Remy, she looks tired, we're going to give Remy a joy chance.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Well, but you're always going to say something, we just have to give you the opportunity.
My thinking is to follow the, you know, do as, as best we can to be in line with what the state's already laid out. I understand the intent is to kind of expand these protections, but I also see that, you know, a nursery school, I mean, those can pop up like this, that, and the other, and I think it becomes burdensome for, for staff, as it says here, even that the ability to administer and enforce this particular provision of the chapter of the McMinnville zoning ordinance is severely compromised and left open to challenge. So I, I mean, I think that staff is saying, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but my interpretation is that the, the most direct way forward is to remove that language, which doesn't coincide with state language and allows us to actually enforce our zoning ordinances.
I, you know, I guess by consensus, unless Doug or David has anything more, by consensus, we can have, we can ask to have that removed by consensus, have you come back, back to us with the amendment?
What you, what you can do is you can vote to initiate the text amendment process, and then because it's land use code, we have to go through the notice to DLCD and public hearing process at the planning commission level, and then ultimately, it will come back to you, just like the sign ordinance amendments will at some point, with the recommendation up from the planning commission.
See, if we all feel comfortable, I'd have somebody make a motion to do just what needed said.
I move that we do this text change.
Whatever David said.
Whatever David said.
Have a motion to do whatever David said. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show up past the council unanimously without Counselor Rudin and Yoder. So David, you're going to have to repeat that for the record.
For the record, what I said was, that was a motion to initiate a legislative amendment pursuant to McMinnville zoning ordinance, section 17.72.080.
You get all that, Rose?
Yeah. It's in Doug's staff report.
So that's the mo, that's the motion Remy made, and Kelly seconded, and we voted on it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, the recommendation that was in the staff report is...
The recommendation was in the staff report. So Doug, do you have anything else you want to cover tonight?
No, I appreciate your conversation and the direction.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we're not going to cover staff reports or advisories from the council tonight, so does anybody have anything else to come in front of the council?
Do we have a, oh, sorry, not the council, Urban Renewal Agency Board, right?
Oh.
Oh, God, we do, don't we?
We forego the urban renewal.
Well, it wouldn't take long, urban renewal for the budget.
Okay, I don't have, I got to pull that out.
So you can, you can adjourn the council meeting and then open the...
I don't remember getting that packet.
I don't remember getting any of that. Okay, council meeting adjourned, now what I'll do is, I'll open the call to order to June, should be, June 14, 2016, meeting, the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. We have the minutes of the March 20, March 8, 2016, Urban Renewal Agency Board meeting. Do I have a...
It was there.
I was looking at the calendar link.
There it is, and I've called this to order, consider minutes to March 18th, do we have minutes included in the packet? Can you scroll down, Row, we have minutes?
It sings.
In fact, you do.
Okay, we do have, we do have minutes.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Aye, second.
You have to move first.
I move that we adopt the minutes.
We have moved by Council President Jeffries, do I have a second by Counselor Makey? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none?
Sorry, backup's DJ.
Yeah, backup.
No.
My battery went dead, all right. So now we'll have a, I'll open a public hearing, and the public, public hearing is regarding the proposed 2016-17 budget, as approved by the Budget Committee. Do we have any, anybody like to testify on the budget?
You've lost your audience.
Nobody like to testify on the budget? Remy, you have any questions on the budget?
No, sir.
Scott?
Nope.
Kelly? Kevin? Okay, anybody in the audience? Nobody in the audience? I'll close the public, public hearing. So what we'll do is we'll, we don't do it, and we'll just get it back in front of us